Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Clarence City Council's meeting for October. Before proceeding, could I ask you to stand and join me with council prayer? Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vow safe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen. I would like to acknowledge Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight, and pay our respects to those past and present. Thank you. Just like to go over the meeting procedures for tonight. Aldermen and officers are clearly meeting in the council chambers in the usual way, except that to meet social distancing requirements, public engagement is constrained to be online. We are live streaming this meeting via YouTube, and a copy of the full agenda is available on council's website. Tonight, Alderman Longley is also attending the meeting remotely because he is required to comply with COVID quarantine restrictions. He will view proceedings via the live feed in the same manner as members of the public. In the same way as members of the public submit deputations and questions to the general manager to read out, so will Alderman Longley via email submit his comments and votes. On occasion, there may be a small delay while we manage these arrangements, which do in fact comply fully with the notice issued to councils under the COVID emergency legislation. Moving on to the meeting itself, item one, apologies, I note that we have a full house, no apologies. In terms of mayor's communication, I'd like to table significant meetings and appointments for myself, deputy mayor, and two other aldermen who are representing council over the period. I'd now like to move to the start items and move through those one by one, noting that we'll have one omnibus motion to receive all these recommendations after we've been through them all. The first is the confirmation of minutes for the 21st of September. As circulated, be taken as read and confirmed. Are there any questions or points in regard to the previous minutes? Item five, declarations of interest of aldermen or close associate. Are there any declarations of interest?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, 11.52.
Thank you. Are there any other declarations? Moving on to petitions, I note we have two general managers to table.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Discussions with the general manager. A petition received from 2,268 signatories requesting council to activate the buyback clause in the contract for the S.A.D. council meeting in Shambro Australia for the construction of a hotel and hospitality training school at Kangaroo Bay, BelRee. Two signatories do not reply with the requirements of the Law and Government Act. Email advice was sent to the petition organizers as the signatories were unable to physically sign the petition. The signatories were added by the petition organizer on their behalf. Mr. Mayor, on the table.
Thank you. Alderman Mulder. There was a second petition?
Thank you, Mayor. There is a second petition. This petition is an electronic petition from 1846 signatories as of the 12th of October 2020, requesting council to reject the development application on land adjacent to 754 and 798 Doran's Road, Sanford, for a jetty and to develop a strategic plan for the foreshore within the council area to ensure similar private facilities are given a wider consultation process to allow for better scrutiny for future applications.
Thank you. Are there any other petitions? Just going back to item four, the council notes the workshops conducted on the 28th of September, 5th of October, and the agenda briefing for the 9th.
Sorry, I need to ask you about what the actual question was on the petition.
Certainly.
This one here? Because we've got a petition in front of us, but I don't know what the question was.
I thought Alderman Mulder.
No.
Did you?
We, the undersigned petition, the mayor and alderman of the Clarence City Council to activate the buyback clause, et cetera, et cetera. So, moving on to item four again, council notes the workshops conducted on the 28th of September, 5th of October, and the agenda briefing for the 9th of October. Are there any questions in regard to the weekly briefing reports, the workshops, I'm sorry, this stuff? Moving on to item 10, reports from outside bodies. Firstly, from the Copping Refuge Disposal Site Joint Authority, I note that the quarterly report is still pending, but did you wish to make any other comment, Alderman?
The AGM is coming up in the not too distant future. I'd also like to note that the Southern Solutions, as well as the Copping Board at the end of day, risk management and teaching for events about corporate.
Thank you. In regard to Tasmanian Water Corporation, we've got an owners' representative group meeting on the 27th of October. And I'll give like the information from that when it's available. In return, in regard to the Greater Hobart Committee, we had a formal meeting today with the three ministers and four mayors, and I will table or communicate for that. In particular, good progress is being made on the shared vision, one vision for the Greater Hobart, and also on the work program, and we'll be moving ahead with the work on that before Christmas. Are there any reports from council and special committees or other representative bodies? Okay, thank you. And finally, on the start items, that we note the information in the weekly briefing reports for 21st, 28th of September, and the 5th of October. Any questions on the weekly briefing reports? In that case, could I have a move in a second for the start items, please? Thanks, Alderman Pierce, second of Alderman Kendy. Motion all those in favor. Carried unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I seek your condolences, your support in fact, in relation to moving a procedural motion prior to discussion on the planning matters, and that is that 11.7.2, the Kangaroo Bay Hotel and Training Facility, that matter be brought forward and discussed prior to the planning authority matters as listed on the agenda.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Alderman Warren. Being procedural, there's no debate. All those in favor? Against? Alderman Longley spoke?
Just waiting for that at the moment, ma'am.
No, motion is lost. Moving on to item seven, public question time. There are no matters on notice or questions previously taken on notice or answers to previous questions taken on notice. So, we do have two questioners, four questions without notice. General Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first question without notice is from Mr. Victor Marsh of BellRee. Mr. Marsh says, "Information on council's website about the public pier currently under construction in Kangaroo Bay notes typical seating, fencing, and lighting. The community expectation was that works would be completed in September 2020. Has the council considered providing ratepayers with an artist impression of the completed design to be displayed at the site?" The second question is, "Will the quality of the seating, fencing, and lighting be impacted by any blowout in the cost of constructing the basic breakwater slash pier structure?" I'll ask Mr. Graham if you would respond to that, please.
Thank you. General Manager, through you, Mr. Mayor. Council does not have an artist impression of the pier to display on the site, and there are no proposed changes to the lighting, seating, and/or fencing. These items are well underway in terms of fabrication and readiness for installation when the deck of the pier is finished.
The second questions for the night come from Mrs. Joanne Marsh of BellRee. Ms. Marsh states, "I have a plan of the general arrangement of a shared cycle path construction, brackets drawing number 6534-10, at BellRee Beach Regional Park dated 16th of March 2020, with status marked 'construction'. It shows a three-metre-wide concrete path traversing the western side of the park between play areas and the beach. The park is predominantly a children's playpark with a high concentration of pedestrian movement in the area of the proposed pathway. In my opinion, this pathway is most appropriately a multi-user pathway to be consistent with the current signage and to respect the safety of pedestrians. This plan does not show how pedestrians put at risk of colliding with cyclists at a number of intersecting pathways, and the limestone pathway from the playground leading to the toilets will be protected. This plan does not address the issue of the bottleneck created by exercise equipment and adjacent trees that are not set back adequately from the pathway. The toilets are also a setback concern. This plan does not show clearly how drainage of stormwater that currently pools in a number of areas in the park will be achieved. When are these proposed works going out to tender? How soon can the engineering group make available to me plans or documents that address my concerns about the safety and amenity risks to park users and show how Pittingshire's safety recommendations are being implemented?" Mr. Graham.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The tender documents are under review at the moment, and in all likelihood, tenders will be called in November. After tenders have been called, we'll be in a position to address Mrs. Marsh's concerns. And also, council has adopted trying to take a master plan review, of which some of her concerns will be addressed as part of the review.
Thanks, Mr. Graham. Moving on to item eight, we have deputations by five members of the public. Can I, before I ask the general manager to read those out, I'll point out that we've received many, many more deputations on this occasion, as well as questions. They have all been circulated to Alderman. I'd like to assure the people who have submitted those that all the aldermen have benefit of those. General Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first submission is from Rosalie Seville of Lauderdale in regard to item 9.1. Ms. Seville says, "I represent the group great. We thank you all for your positive responses to our submission. The new muzzle-free status implemented by the Tasmanian government in December 2018 has seen greyhounds recognized as the wonderful gentle dogs they are, and because accredited Gap and Brightside Greyhounds are no longer required to wear a muzzle, the adoption rate has increased by 20%. Currently, in excess of 300 greyhounds per annum are being adopted. Add to this the around 2,500 already adopted and their lifespan of approximately 12 years, we will see the demand for exercise areas for them increase dramatically. Greyhounds are trained and conditioned to run at their maximum speed until they exit the industry at approximately two to four years of age. It just seems so unfair that the opportunity to run at full speed is cut short when they are adopted as we have no access to the slipping tracks available in other states. It is also not healthy for their finely tuned athletic bodies. Greyhounds go through a rigorous assessment program after they exit racing to ensure their suitability to live with small dogs and often cats, chickens, and other animals. My greyhound Spock lived with an elderly cat and also a dash hound, and is happy to be bossed around by both. Why greyhound-only areas to run? Because greyhounds have very thin skin and sparse coat, an attack from another breed can be catastrophic. As a result, many can die from an injury that most other breeds would recover. Because of their laid-back nature, the fact that they rarely bark and sleep for most of the day, they lend themselves to apartment and city living, making it more important to have a safe area to chase a ball, stretch their legs, get their heart rate up, and have fun like any other dog. Then it's back to the couch for a nap. To those that have a pet dog, imagine for a moment your dog never had the opportunity to run again after its third birthday. It's not healthy mentally or physically. With this in mind, we implore you to earmark an area now to be set aside for the future so greyhound pet owners are not waiting for years for their first off-leash area when the law is amended by the government. We do hope CCC can lead the way in southern Tasmania for other councils by voting yes to a designated greyhound-specific off-leash area to keep them happy and healthy for the rest of their lives because they have truly earned it. Thank you." The second representation tonight is from Mr. Peter Osborne on behalf of Safe Ralph's Bay Again Group and other concerned Clarence ratepayers in relation to item 11.3.1. Clarence has an extensive coastline with many waterfront properties. Approving this proposal would encourage many similar applications for large private jetties. This creates benchmark precedence for any future private jetty planning decisions. Council should refuse this application on planning scheme grounds as follows. 29.3.1, complementary to the use of the reserved land. A private jetty for exclusive use by one individual landholder cannot be considered complementary to the use of the land reserved for the public. All jetties, public or private, have an impact on the amenity of the surrounding area. This will impact unreasonably by privatizing space and inserting a large structure. The assessment that this proposal is of a small scale is inaccurate. It is significantly larger than the existing public jetties at Dorans Road, South Arm, and the Gilston Bay Boat Club. 19.3.5, complement, enhance, and enhance the use of the land for recreational purposes. A large private jetty which is security fenced cannot be considered to augment or support passive recreational use. It detracts from passive recreation used by preventing it on the part of the coastline and therefore diminishes the public nature of the open space. 29.4.2, minimize adverse impact on the landscape as viewed from the road. It will not minimize adverse impact since it will be clearly seen from Droofy Point Road, the South Arm Highway, and from many locations on the shores and from the waters of the Derwent. The visual changes will clearly impact on the natural landscape. E11.7.2, new facilities to be grouped with existing facilities. This large structure would be completely separate from any other similar facilities, boat rams, or jetties. Large boat jetties of this nature should be grouped in sheltered areas already designated for similar use, such as BellRee or Cremore. E11.7.1, avoid or mitigate impact on natural values. The marine environment assessment report recommends the designing of structures to span over intertidal zones to avoid disturbing the substrate with piles or footings, et cetera. The current design has piles and footings in the intertidal zone. Indeed, no design could comply unless it had some component built on the adjacent council public open space. These are legitimate grounds to reject this planning application. Other considerations. One, the report to council points out that the remaining pillars from an illegally constructed jetty in the area have been left in situ because the Crown deemed their removal too damaging to the substrata. And yet, the planning report states that this proposed jetty will be removable if necessary, despite the fact that it will have many more pillars. It is difficult to see how driving or drilling a large number of additional piles into the riverbed and potentially having to remove them later can be considered to be low impact or consistent with council's previous argument. Two, given the report's statement that the jetty may be removed at a future date if needs be, does the council have a decommissioning plan? The third deputation tonight is from David and Eleanor Richardson and Justine McGinnis in relation to item 11.3.3. "We are the owners of properties at 574 and 576 Oceana Drive, Howard, and our properties are adjacent to the proposed new development at 14th and Meter Court, Howard. We are concerned with the proposed development impacting our privacy. The slope of the land, the buildings, high footings, and proximity to our fences results in its living areas and decks looking directly into our backyards and possibly 574's dining bedroom and laundry, and 576 kitchen, two bedrooms and laundry. 576 has three little girls, and 574 has young visiting family members who love to play outside. For both families, it is the only outdoor area in which they can play, and for all the families to relax as to the front, as to the front there is of the main road." Both sets of owners were of the understanding that this lot of land has bushfire restrictions limiting its development on parts of the allotment, and that this proposal is not complying with those restrictions. Should those existing restrictions, which were present when the lot was purchased, be complied with, our properties would not be as impacted. We all love the area we live in and worked hard to build our dream homes. We expected that a home would be constructed on this property. It is, it's positioning on the lot which would, which could impact our privacy, property value, and most of all, our lifestyle. We also have some further ancillary concerns, believe another adjacent owner has also submitted their concerns. We would be happy to discuss. Thank you. The fourth deputation tonight is from Darren and Angela Jenkins in relation to item 11.3.6. 34 Clinton Road, Gilston Bay Concerns and Officers Report to Council. The report states, "All documentation required for the traffic management plan has been provided", but then goes on to say, "They were not required and therefore not provided, and the issue is therefore not of determining weight." This does not make sense. The report leaves out the number of traffic movements this development will generate. Our estimate is a minimum 290 vehicle movements per day. The Department of State Growth Report, July 2020, for the East Derwent Highway Upgrade indicated the existing southern intersection of Clinton Road and East Derwent Highway is unsafe with many near misses and issues for safety of schoolchildren crossing the highway. Increases in traffic compounds this problem. This issue was agreed a priority project at council's meeting on the 4th of September 2017, yet council officers have included no reference to issues. Why? They know no issues regarding pedestrian safety. Why? The fact that there is no detailed traffic management plan indicates that "not of determining weight" actually means "not addressed". This is not full disclosure. Given concerns will not be considered after tonight, council alderman cannot assess traffic impact slash safety or satisfy duty of care to the community's safety. The DN375 lot connection is sized to accommodate runoff from post-development site in a 5% AEP event. Council infrastructure downstream of the site is known to have capacity issues, noted in the developer's engineering submission. Officers' report has no mention of capacity issues. Why? Where are the environmental impact studies? For example, where is the planning in relation to the retention of the old Tasmanian blue gums when there are endangered swift parrots on site? The report notes a right-of-way over our properties, 23 Oscar's Place. A right-of-way is over 25 Oscar's Place, which after development of 34A Clinton Road, no longer exists. A very clear report error. The final deputation tonight is from Anne Geird in relation to item 11.7.2. "I am speaking as a community representative, a caring and supportive community I am humble and honored to belong to. It is in regard to the Kangaroo Bay Hotel and Hospitality School site, a governance item in tonight's meeting, and a petition with just over 2,200 signatures lodged with council. As our elected representatives, you have to decide if developers Shambrood will be granted a further two-year extension on their proposed development in Kangaroo Bay. This contentious issue has been gaining notoriety, not only in the local area but statewide and further, for over three and a half years. But starting in August 2016, when only designs of the proposed hotel were publicized and no mention or images were made of a separate building running 83 metres along Cambridge Road, to advertising the development over the Christmas, New Year period, and council approving the application before many people's normal life resumed in January of 2017. Most were happy with a hotel. Once residents became aware of the full extent of the entire proposal, anger and concern rose. Robert Morris Nunn, senior partner of Hunter Developments, engaged with the community, listened to concerns, and revised the original plans at their own expense, as Shambrood did not want to change the proposal or consider community. Even Robert thought the proposal was too big for the area. While the community were very grateful of this consideration and effort involved, the revised plans did little to alleviate the concerns of the inappropriateness of this development for our small bay and BellRee, the huge increase in traffic numbers that would be created, and subsequent safety issues, as well as the constant problem of insufficient parking in the area. Many hours and many dollars have been spent on attempting to keep this proposal alive. The events of the pandemic have overtaken the entire world, and sadly, this may change the way we live forever. This development is very reliant on international students, travel, and tourism. All could take years to recover and may even be different in the years to come. This development is about exclusivity and exclusion. Where the people who have signed the petition live should not matter. Every one of them knows and loves this area. They travel through it, walk, bicycle, or go to the playground, sail, frequent restaurants, shop here, play sport here, attend the gym or the dance studio, go to school or church here. They have family and friends who live here, all are concerned, have a right to voice those concerns, and ask the Clarence Council, as the development has not commenced, to activate the buyback clause in the sale contract. The community are not happy with having our bay overdeveloped. The foreshore and access to the river are paramount to why we live and love living in Hobart. Council had a plan for this beautiful area. Now it's time to buy back the land and incorporate this historic and iconic area into part of Clarence's heart, a place for everyone to enjoy. Thank you for your time."
Thanks, General Manager. Moving on to motion on notice, 9.1, Alderman Kendy.
Yes, Miss Me. Thank you. I move the motion in my name. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We've got a big night to get through, so I seek council support. Happy to take any questions.
And Alderman Walker is the second up. Did you wish to speak further?
No, thank you.
Alderman Walker.
I commend the motion and note that the timing is right with the current review of the Dog Act starting today.
Other speakers? There have been no speaker against. I'll put the motion. All those in favor? And just like Alderman Longley?
Alderman Longley has voted in favor. Alderman Longley had some comments, ma'am, but...
Okay.
It's late.
Look, I have put the vote. It is carried unanimously. I've recorded his vote. So unanimously passed. Congratulations, Alderman Kendy. Item 9.2, no motion, Alderman Warren, applying the Aboriginal flag. Do I have a second, please? Thanks, Alderman Mulder.
Thank you. Last year, we as the council agreed to establish a reconciliation action plan. We also voted to become a welcoming city. With these decisions, we follow a number of other Tasmanian councils and councils around Australia in taking positive steps towards social cohesion and acknowledging that every one of our residents has a contribution to make to our city. But those plans are some way off. We begin every public council meeting by acknowledging and... We begin every public council meeting by acknowledging and paying our respects to the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today. We pay our respects by flying the Aboriginal flag on reconciliation day and during NADOC week. It's a sure thing that when we start work on our reconciliation action plan, we'll take the simple step of flying the Aboriginal flag all the time. We have the flag, we have the flagpole, there are no barriers to stop us doing this. So today I'm asking you, why do we need to wait six months or longer to begin paying our respects? Why should we take down the flag at the end of NADOC week? This is not something that we, that should be treated like taking down Christmas decorations. By flying the Aboriginal flag on an ongoing basis, we're saying, we see you, we acknowledge your contribution to our city, we're ready to work with you, we're listening. I urge my fellow aldermen to support this motion to begin paying our respects now, not in six months' time.
Thank you, Alderman Moulder.
Mr. Mayor, as the inaugural patron of the Tasmanian Reconciliation Community Association, I know that all sectors of the Aboriginal community would welcome such a, such a move and I think it's, it is a first step. It is symbolic, but if you don't start with a statement of where you're going, then I think, you know, your journey is fraught. This is a really good statement about what we do now.
Do have Alderman Blomley's hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Blomley has provided the following contribution. Mr. Mayor, as colleagues know, I'm an ardent supporter of the national reconciliation movement and of the stated aims of reconciliation Tasmania. For these reasons, I'm also a strong and vocal supporter of council's involvement in the development of a reconciliation action plan for RAP. A RAP is a strategic document that supports an organisation's business plan. It includes practical actions that will drive an organisation's contribution both internally and in the communities in which it operates. There are four types of RAP and this council is at the first level, the reflect stage. The reflect stage sets out the minimum elements required from this council to build strong relationships, respect and opportunities within our organisation and our community. Mr. Mayor, for many of us, this is a sensitive area and one that quite rightly deserves to be addressed with the utmost professionalism and mature consideration. It is for this reason that I'm perplexed as to the timing of Alderman Warren's motion. In my mind, if we are to achieve true and lasting reconciliation, this council must do a great deal more than adopt an easy and tokenistic approach to flying a flag. At the very least, surely we ought to first implement and embed the reflect stage in our organisation and our community. Every journey starts with a single step and to ensure we end at the right destination, it is incumbent upon us all to ensure the important work of reconciliation Tasmania and the RAP is not derailed through empty symbolic gestures. The traditional owners as well as the other citizens of Clarence deserve no less. Mr. Mayor, it is for these reasons I do not support Alderman Warren's motion.
Thank you, other speakers. Alderman McKendie.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I cannot see for one moment that this is an empty symbolic gesture. Alderman Moulder got to his feet just before me because I was very keen to second this motion. I'm really quite sad that we haven't already done this, so please let's get on with it and every day acknowledge the traditional landowners of this place.
Thank you, other speaker, Alderman Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion for simply flying the Aboriginal flag, which I totally agree with and I must give credit to Alderman Moulder some years ago, trying to do something very similar got to his feet, so I certainly support the motion tonight.
Thank you, other speakers. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I can vividly recall that particular occasion when this matter was discussed in this chamber. And one of the reasons why it didn't succeed, from my understanding, is the fact that it was an opportunity for other organisations to be able to fly their flag on suitable occasions as and when required. Now, there's nothing wrong with the motion as far as flying that flag from time to time, I would support that, but the motion is on an ongoing basis and that therefore would preclude, as I see it, any other organisation from being able to come to the city and with a representative group of people that have their own flag because of their particular organisation. And as a good gesture to that and a kind of courtesy to them, I would have thought that that flag would have been able to be flown on that pole, as we had determined some years ago, and that's why it has only been used on certain occasions. And I am aware, Mr. Mayor, that there was another organisation that came at the council to speak on a representative matter and they had their own flag and that was flown on that particular occasion. So having said that, because of the words on ongoing basis, I cannot support the motion because it would mean that those other organisations, and then when we discussed it some time back, it was on the basis that those organisations, their representatives would be able to fly the flag as a part of their input to whatever their organisation was sort of here to represent and therefore the flag could be raised as a matter of courtesy to them. So if we have had those words on ongoing basis removed and therefore the flag could have been raised on most occasions as when this council may determine, I would support that, but then for it to remain on the pole as to speak forever, basically, it just seems to detract from what the intention of the matter was when we installed that flag some years ago.
Thanks, other speakers. Alderman Edmonds, I think was just first, and then Alderman Newington.
I would try to speak on this to me as soon as possible. Much as Landon did the motion before it, but I think points may have been made quite succinctly, but I'll just make a comment about the points that Alderman James raised about how it might be received by a group to come and have their flag fly. I'd be happy to volunteer the council's flag or the Australian flag to come down or rotation off, because I think it almost comes to the crux of the matter, if there's a lack of respect for the flag of a group visiting is to not fly. What does it say to people who actually own this land? I just think that's quite profound sort of way to think about it, that, you know, indigenous people have been here for a lot longer than European settlers such as most of our ancestors. And look, this is really low hanging fruit, as far as I'm concerned, and there is a lot more to it, but it is a step forward and as a lot of people have already said, this is really sort of simple reasons as to why it should be done. And so for that reason, I think that as a smoke respect, it's something that certainly has my 100% support.
Thank you, Alderman Newington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, if I thought something like putting the flag up every day would make a significant difference to the whole direction of the debate about all this sort of stuff and certainly the people that I see in the community that we read about in the paper that were affected by violence and other things that happened in Aboriginal communities and also the whole of Australia at times. If I thought it was going to help some of the real issues that I get concerned about, well, like I said, I'd support it. You know, as a couple of people have mentioned about the symbolism of these sort of things, I mean, the thing about it, I want everyone to realise is that reconciliation is a two-way thing and sometimes I feel like we don't get the opportunity to have the opinion of the majority at times, being able to say things without being called certain names. We all know what that is. And I think, you know, if there are things that I could do that made a real difference, I certainly would, but I just think some of the symbolism that's creeping into our society, which is just way over the top, that sometimes we need to sit back and call it out at times. I mean, when you sit on a Zoom meeting and the first two speakers, you know, in the last few months I've been doing all that, the first two speakers do the welcome to country, it gets devalued. And I think, I feel that some of this stuff, and I mean, I looked at how many days we actually have at the moment for Aboriginal, you know, acknowledgement and recognition and there's actually 12 of them, no, sorry, 10, or the weeks or days. And, you know, I mean, we really, you know, if it was all helping and we had more of them and we had more flag flying, at what point are we going to sit back and go, well, what is going to make the biggest difference? How do we really make a difference? How do we help people come out of challenging situations? How do we really help these people? And I honestly can't say that I think that that would, you know, flying the flag continuously would make all that much difference. I mean, I know it would to some, but I just think it needs to be done as part of a bigger review of the whole process, which we're heading towards. And I mean, the other thing is too, that I mean, if we fly the Aboriginal flag, what about the Torres Strait Island flag? You know, I mean, are we excluding the Torres Strait Island people, why not fly on that one as well? So, you know, I mean, I'm a proud Australian and I'd like to think that as a society, we could actually put aside the race card at times and just focus on Australian first and still do the acknowledgement of Aboriginal people in other ways, which I know that we do on a regular basis in a lot of different settings. But like I said, reconciliation is a two-way thing and I think that, you know, focusing on one people and one group rather than being seen to be, doing some of the things that I've seen proven in our society, I just think sometimes there needs to be a chance to sit back and take a breath. And I think, you know, if it's my way of saying, well, hang on, let's have a look at some of this stuff and plan it out a little bit better rather than just do the next thing that comes along, well, you know, that's my chance to have my say in it. But like I said, if there are things that I, if I thought it would make a significant difference to the outcome for Aboriginal people, I would be in it straight away, but I just question whether all these things actually do make a significant difference.
Okay, other speakers. Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a matter of some distress as I coast through my 40s that over four decades, we have really done a great job when it comes to closing the gap and there's a lot of metrics that you could look at there, but I mean, the one that just smacks them to face is life expectancy. These are, these are big time issues and it does concern me sometimes that they fall down the priority of certain entities and certain political organisations as far as the priority goes. This council has embarked on a reconciliation action plan and I think as Alderman Blomley noted, reflect stage, so I think that needs to follow its course. And I retain a completely open mind to where that goes. And I also do acknowledge the contributions of those that have spoken in favour of this motion tonight. And I don't in general terms disagree with the sentiments that you've raised, but I'm going to sit in the conservative position of staying in line with the current state flag protocol at this time. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak with this and I do appreciate the mover bringing this forward and the way that it has been general.
Okay, other speakers. Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, at early, in proceedings, I actually was instrumental in us looking at getting a reconciliation action plan. However, I can't support this motion. I think a couple of times this year, I have been pilloried by other aldermen for bringing something to the table without taking it to a workshop. So I feel that if something that is going to be considered of such import has not come to a workshop, then I can't support it at this particular point in time. I don't know the details of what other organisations actually have their flag flown. I'm not party to the operational aspects of the flag flying at council. So I would like more information from the officers in relation to this matter. And as Alderman Blomley and Alderman Walker have actually said, I think it needs to be embedded in the work we do in relation to the reconciliation action plan. So I won't be supporting this move at this particular time.
Alderman John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When this was first proposed, I took the time to go and talk to some of the members of our community who are Aboriginal and asked them what they thought, because I don't know, to be realistic. And their feeling that I got very much was that, yes, they're really keen that we do the reconciliation plan, that is very important, but that this is seen as a really good gesture towards that, that they understand that we've got a lot of work to do in our reconciliation action plan, this is not something that will happen overnight. But flying the flag now is seen as a real bonus, as a real show of our intent to do some work in this area. I think it's important that we do do this continuously.
Thank you. All spoken, so write a reply.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do thank colleagues for their contributions tonight. I particularly thank Alderman John for doing what I didn't have the opportunity to do. I did speak to the Tasmanian Aboriginal Centre who told me that they would really appreciate this, but to actually speak to the community, it really worries me that all of us have been in a workshop and 12 white people sitting around deciding whether or not this is a good idea. It has, everything I've read and people that I've spoken to who have that sort of contact say that this is so fundamental. It says, you are part of this country, you are welcome here. So in terms of the timing, the timing is because NADOC this week is coming up. It has been postponed this week, this year because of COVID, but it's coming up in November and I really hate us to take the flag down once we've put it up. It's important enough to put it up, it's important enough to leave it there. To address Alderman James's comment about other organisations, we're really lucky. We have four flag poles. We fly the official Australian flag, we fly the Clarence flag, I imagine there aren't a lot of people who could identify that without actually seeing it flown, we fly the Tasmanian flag, we have an empty flagpole. So we have the ability to fly the official Australian flag, the official Aboriginal flag, it is one of the three official Australian flags, and to still acknowledge visiting groups and thank you for pointing out that. I think Alderman Edmund's words on that topic was so succinct and what I would have tried to say to him would have said it so much better, that I think we owe a greater debt of acknowledgement to the original custodians of this land than a visiting group, but we can do both. We can fly this flag all the time and we can still acknowledge visitors. You asked about the Torres Strait Island flag, that is an official Australian flag, there are the three official Australian flags. This motion is purely about the Aboriginal one, I know that we have significant Aboriginal population, I'm not sure about the Torres Strait Islands, if there is, that's something we can consider next, but there's no reason that that should stop us doing this. It's not, we don't have to do both, we can do one and start, start on that path. Alderman Walker talked about the state protocol, just because that our state government has not yet made this step, there's no reason why we should lag behind. I know that Hobart City Council, Launceston City Council, I think Invera and a number of councils and state governments around the country do fly the Aboriginal flag. So let's follow them, let's be ahead of the stake up. So again, I just finish with the words that I started with, which is.
Thank you.
We see you.
Okay, so the motion for the chairs, we fly the flag on a continuous basis, all those in favour? Against?
Alderman Blomley is against.
And the motion is carried.
Sorry.
As much as I like calls to be held.
Well, my read was 7.5, if I've miscounted, can we have all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six. Against? One, two, three, four, five, six. The motion's lost, thank you. My apologies. Pardon me? Oh, my turn. Noting that 11.2 dissemination petitions, petitions, there's no business there, now it might appear that we move on to set as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. And the first item there is 11.3.1, a development application for land adjacent to 754 Dorans Road and 798 Dorans Road for a jetty. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second, Alderman Mulder? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the alternative motion that's been moved and seconded is that, and I won't read it in its entirety because it's quite lengthy, but I'll speak to it as it's listed, that the development application for a jetty at land adjacent to 754 Dorans Road and 798 A. Dorans Road Sanford be refused for the following reasons. Mr. Mayor, in accordance with Performance Criteria 19.3.5 P5, that does go into the point, and it is spelled out in that particular office's report, that the proposal satisfies that the access for private boat facility over public space is in fact complementary and it does support such use. The motion that's included here is that the Performance Criteria, the proposal does not satisfy that criteria in that the access for private pleasure boat facility over public open space reduces the recreational use of the adjacent waters rather than augment and support such use and therefore does not satisfy this test for a discretionary use. Also, in Performance Criteria 29.3 P1A, the proposal use as a private facility detracts from, instead of complementing, the recreation uses of the adjacent land and therefore does not satisfy the test for that discretionary use in the zone. In 2015, this council had in front of it a matter in relation to a subdivision of the land in that vicinity. And there was a public open space easement along the foreshore that the developer had to surrender to council's use and also for the use of public to be able to obviously transverse that particular walkway around the coast. The proposed facility, in fact, will detract from this because it will restrict the use of the adjacent land, that is the council's public walkway and accessway, and therefore does not satisfy that particular use. The Performance Criteria 11.7.2 P1A, with an existing public facility nearby, and we know that relates to the Dorans Road facility, which is a public facility, there's no demonstrated need for additional jetty in this coastal location. And also, there's no demonstrated need for a building, let alone a private building, in this coastal location. I refer council to the officer's, excuse me, report on page 19, 3.2. The proposal is to construct a new private 60-metre concrete jetty within Ralph's Bay. The jetty includes a 60-metre long and 2-metre wide concrete deck with a 20-metre long and a 2.5-metre wide return, a deck height 1.5 above the AHD over the water, a boat jack-up system with four steel piles on the inside of the end of the jetty so that the vessels can be lifted out of the water, a 6-metre long and 4.4-metre wide, a 3.2 high storage shed structure located and in proximity to the entry to the jetty. Mr. Mayor, this is a large construction. And in the attachments, you can actually see the size and scale of this and the number of piles that is necessary for this concrete structure to be of that length and also the width. And also, it would seem that this particular jetty construction is definitely out of keeping with the coastal attributes and the environment of the area. I see council's support.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the big issues with this is that it is difficult to see how excluding people from an area with a facility that has shed locked and is surrounded by what you believe security fencing all the way around could in any way complement recreationally used to the area. Were it open to the public, were there no shed on the front, and could people come along there and tie up their boats and come ashore for a picnic on the bland land, on the land, you would then see how it could complement and add to the amenity of the area. But this is locked up. This is secure. So, you know, A, the public can't get to it. So B, it therefore detracts from their ability to use the area and enjoy the waterways and all those things. At worst, it actually doesn't complement, it's neutral. Because, you know, for a little part, there's nothing, you know, they can use the waters around it, but they can't use that particular facility. So at worst, it is neutral and I would argue that actually detracts both those tests, fail the requirement to complement, to add value to. So for those bases. But while I'm on this, there's, you know, there's misinformation on this issue which doesn't help us very much. The local Greens MP is in the media claiming that this is a threat to the spotted handfish. As we well know from the studies at Lord of the Canal, for the Lord of the Canal Estate, and this particular report goes to great lengths with transarcs and actual site inspections and dives to go and re-establish the fact that there is no habitat of spotted handfish. Mr. Mayor, if you like, the spotted handfish hasn't been spotted. Then on the other side, you have Mr. Clifford, the ferry master, who says that this jetty is an essential part of the Transderry Forward Ferry Service, therefore it is required. There's no greater supporter of as many jetties as possible throughout the Durrin estuary to facilitate a ferry service. Because as we've heard time and time again, a single ferry service at Belarive with access by pedestrians and cyclists only is no basis for a public transport network, which must be like the bus, have a series of stops where people can walk down, get on and go. So you won't find a greater service for me. But this is a private jetty with no vehicular access. You can't, you'd have to have a special bike to ride there, although and some special boots to walk there. And just down the road, there is a public jetty with that, which is public, which has public access, which has a roadway and could be used if this was the case. So you get these counter arguments and all they do is create division, hype, and they're actually misinformation. If you look at this on its planning merits, as Alderman James has done, and I compliment him on the work he's done on this, there are clear planning reasons why this should not go ahead. And I think it would be much helpful in the public debate if we stuck to facts.
Thank you. I've just mentioned that Alderman Longley for chair, it's the officer's recommendation. If this is lost. Alderman Yurington.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I suppose this is one of those contentious issues. There's a couple we've got to deal with tonight. But I mean, look, the debate about whether people like jetties or not like jetties, I mean, the fact is that we live on an island. And private jetties have been a part of Tasmanian life for a long period of time. You know, they provide an important purpose. And I mean, just talking about some of the issues were raised about privacy and fences and lock to the public. I mean, that's something that's happened on a lot of jetties all around Tasmania. And I mean, if someone's going to invest the money to build something, I think they have a right to protect it. I would also love to be able to see a situation where it is open to the general public. And if we can achieve those sort of things, it'd be great. But, you know, we're not the ones building it. It's an individual that's using it. And, you know, the issue here is that, you know, I quite like the look of jetties. Some people don't. And I mean, it's a situation where how do we come up with a compromise there? And it's obviously here where the proponents tried to talk to the local residents and there was no chance of a compromise there. So, you know, I think that would have been the case all along. I mean, we all know the history of Ralph's Bay and how some people wanted to stay as it is. But the important issue that I'd like to sort of make on all this is that when the land was subdivided and other people moving into the area, there was no foreshore access around the foreshore for the community to use. So the increase in development and the spread of houses in and around the bay has created this public access that wasn't there before. So, you know, it's interesting how some people want to say, well, you know, I want to build my house there, but somebody else can't build a jetty in the bay. And I mean, look, I know it's a little bit different. They might personally own the land. But like I said, you know, other houses and subdividing land has, does produce public benefit in terms of access to the waterfront. And the issue here is that no one's going to actually be restricted from using the waterfront reserve. They may not like the look of the jetty, but they're still going to have access over that land. Look, is it appropriate? I mean, really, it comes down to a Crown law issue. And they're the ones that decided it's happy. They're happy for it to be built into the bay. And I mean, to be honest, I think it'd be a bit reckless for us to knock it back in relation to the planning scheme and leave us liable for the potential for increased costs to fight it. If those that don't like it, or I'm sure there's people out there that'll probably try and appeal this one. I think it's up to them to argue their case in that situation. You know, we've been caught out of a couple of situations now where we've defended some things that ended up costing us potentially a bit of money. And I mean, you know, I'd be a bit reluctant to just go down that path. The thing about, people have mentioned the fact that there's a jetty just up the road. You know, I've used Dorans Road jetty quite a bit. And I can guarantee that a boat any bigger than about 15 foot would struggle to use it. I mean, when the tide's out in there in about 500, 600 mill of water, and anything bigger than a little tinny struggles to get in and out of there. So, you know, there is a need for some form of jetty in Ralph's Bay. Like I said, if it was possible to have something that other people could use, that would be better. But, you know, we allow it as part of our planning scheme. We allow it as part of Crown land policies. So, you know, the issue where people have raised about, you know, some bloke with a bit of money is out there, you know, how come he can do it? Well, if I had the money and I could buy a dirty, great big boat and I was allowed to build one, I would too. So I think it wouldn't be fair for me to turn around and deny that right to someone else if they've worked hard and been able to do well for themselves and it's a permitted activity. Who am I to get in the way of that? And the thing is too, you know, I mean, it's something that, like I said, some people won't like. It's allowed under the scheme. They've gone through all the hoops, you know, and they're going to spend the money. It's economic activity in our community. I mean, some people will say some places should never be built on and public land might be one of those. But I think it adds a bit of value to the community. People are still going to have access to the foreshore. And I'll be supporting Alderman Longley's motion. Put it up if this one fires.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's one thing I'm just really struggling with here with the comments from Alderman Yurington is that the public benefit, we're talking about a private jetty with no public access. In fact, it's completely fenced off, providing no benefits to community whatsoever. That probably will impact on the community and the environment in many ways for a long, long time. And this is before us with little or nothing in the way of community consultation. These people have managed to get together almost 2,000 signatures on a petition in such a short amount of time. And to highlight a comment in that earlier deputation, which was certainly resonates with me, this creates benchmark precedents for any future private jetty planning decisions. I will be happily supporting Alderman James's alternative motion.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Pearce and then Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Alderman Kennedy, I'm also supporting this motion because I think Alderman James has done a very good job in his motion here because, see, what public benefit is it? When I read page 19 of the report, I'm looking at all these things and I'm saying, you know, things are locked up fencing. What value is it to the only person that lives here? You know, I just can't see, Alderman Yurton says a jetty, but it's not much use if a person needs a jetty and it's a private jetty and you cannot use it. I cannot quite see what the use of that is. I mean, I really think that this motion here that Alderman James has put up really deserves support because I'm really, I'm really thinking that when we're taking everything away from the public in a situation where it's opposed, I think it's totally wrong.
And from Pearce, Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I managed to get down to this area today and it was worthwhile reacquainting myself with this magical area. It's 25 km from my house, but feels about three hours away. It's interesting that just around the corner is Richardson's Beach and there's a little bit of the derelict remains of a jetty on that beach, that area. And I understand one of the reasons that's still in place is that advice has been received that it'd be dilutive areas and damaging to remove those remains from the rock structures which they're embedded in. So I get a bit confused. I read this report and it talks about how, well, A, how the actual insertion would be damaging, but B, how the removal would be feasible there in an area that's much more exposed versus just around the corner. Now, I do believe in property rights. And I would always push back against motions of compulsory acquisition of rate payers' lands, except in the most extreme circumstances around major roadways, et cetera. And if there's an instance where a property has a title to high watermark or there is a, you know, legacy jetty permitted in place, then I would support that remaining in place. But neither are playing this instance. This crosses and impacts on Crown land. Now...
Alderman Walker, I do need to remind you that that fact is not necessarily a relevant paying item in this instance.
Well, no, it's not as much also as the fact that it's not really the Queen's land either at this stage. I mean, it's generally exempt by the communities. But you're right. In general, what we do talk about tonight, though, Mr. Mayor, is the matters that Alderman James raised. And we are in for a long night, so I won't be repeating them all. But the idea that the shed and fencing is consistent with existing jetties, et cetera, in the area. If anyone can, you know, explain that to me in their, or where these are around Ralph's Bay, I'd be fascinated to know because I'm not aware of any such things. In fact, that level of fencing I'm not aware of, except for places such as Selfsport. Now, it's a curious situation because we don't get, or I certainly don't recall any motions like this coming before us on my time at council. So I would be not even venturing to predict what might happen at an appeal stage. It would be inappropriate to do so. But there's little precedence in place to sort of work on that stuff. But the points raised by Alderman James, I believe, are ground strong enough for usual. And in the case of this, Walker's going to have to say no on this tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Other speakers? Sorry, Alderman Longley?
I'm not even sure why we're discussing this matter tonight. The applicant had been given a deferral up till November and has written to residents saying he had no wish to have the man brought forward. I've asked questions in council meetings and the GDM indicated that we're unlikely to be discussing it after November. The result of this southern hearing is that there's been no chance for the community consultation, which is required under section 3.4.4 of the Tasmanian State Coastal Policy of 1996, which was last updated in 2009, which reads, "Communities will be given the opportunity to make submissions to all plans or policies affecting the coastal zone. Consultative meetings with relevant and interested community groups and individuals in local or regional areas will be held in conjunction with the release of policies and plans wherever possible." And it seems that only the people whose properties are close to the applicants actually received a letter. And the rest of the community was quite unaware that this development was proposed. And this is not a suburban extension where you're building an extra room on your house that has limited impact beyond the immediate neighbours. This is a blight on the coastline loved by many. And the community has a right to have their say on what happens to a foreshore that many use for recreation. I know there are people who still support canal estate type development in Ralph's Bay who have no issue with this becoming like the Gold Coast, but don't understand the attraction of living in one with nature. People who know the price of everything and the value of nothing. I find the marine ecological reporting conditions inadequate. Conditions include avoiding unnecessary disturbance of the marine flora and fauna. So who decides what's necessary? Avoiding work when marine animals have been sighted. I'd like to know how this is going to be enforced. We've seen interstate where priceless cultural heritage has been destroyed. How much easier it is to ask for forgiveness and permission and how insignificant the penalties are. Okay, so, oops, sorry I destroyed that breeding ground, my bad. But the damage is done. And once it's gone, it's gone. The officer's report gives me no comfort that this beautiful bay will be protected. So I support Alderman James's alternative motion.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Alderman Edwards.
Thank you. Just very briefly, a couple of meetings ago, I did flag a motion to come to council where we could have then a subsequent workshop to discuss... we could have then a subsequent workshop to discuss best practice, best practices around the way we advertise our DAs and do consultation if necessary. I put that on the back burner because we had such a jam-packed meeting tonight. However, it's coming either in three weeks or six. You could sort of see this coming a mile out and I wrote to the G M late September, sort of seeking some more consultation. You could already see the petition was out there. This was only heading to one conclusion and that was a conclusion that was going to make lawyers rich. I'd have liked to have seen a way that we could intervene. Now, there was a very respectful and well summarized memo back from the Major of City Planning which laid out the reasons why that could not be the case. However, I think it's still worth putting on record that it was sought. Yeah, I took a drive down there to the site. Absor-, is everything okay?
I'm sorry, yeah, please continue.
Obviously the site and then I've looked at these two motions side by side with a planning hat on. And, you know, with a sober look at the two things, putting aside other issues such as what Alderman Mulder raised about this spectre of Rosely Woodruff commenting on every single issue that comes to this council, my position is that I support what Alderman James is proposing this evening.
Thanks, Alderman Edmonds.
That wasn't his intention. Absolutely wasn't mine. Alderman Blomley did indicate he wanted to speak. I, I mentioned that he wanted to foreshadow out of turn, he had a bit more to say about that. I apologize for the way we're getting used to this submission via email, so I propose that we listen to what Alderman Blomley had to say.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Blomley provides the following comments. "Mr. Mayor, tonight we sit as a planning authority. That means we have no choice but to assess the merits of the application before us against the planning scheme requirements. No ifs, no buts. Simply put, that is our role this evening in determining this matter, nothing less and nothing more. Like all of us, I'm very well aware of the controversial nature of this project and have engaged in meaningful dialogue with members of our community, with the overwhelming majority expressing their ardent opposition to this proposal. However, as we are required under the legislation to view the application through the lens of the planning scheme and the planning scheme alone, we simply cannot take broader considerations into play, no matter how much we may wish to do so. As we know, the Crown has granted the developer landowner consent and, sitting as a planning authority, we need to approach this as a planning application and confine our consideration to exactly what our statutory role provides for. Simply put, the broader issues that have been so well articulated by community members such as Mr. Peter Osborne and Miss Robyn Moore cannot be considered part of the process this evening. While this may, this position may, quite reasonably, not sit well with some, I note Mr. Osborne's eighth October WIN TV news interview where he referenced the preparedness of the Save Ralph's Bay Again group to pursue this issue via the appeals tribunal process, which is of course their right. Mr. Mayor, it is not for these reasons that I am left with no alternative but to not support the alternative motion before the Chair and indicate that if this motion is lost, I foreshadow the officer's recommendation."
Thank you. Other speakers? Blomley, Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I don't feel very comfortable with either the officer's recommendation or with Alderman James' alternative motion. I think this is a really difficult situation and as Alderman Mulder has actually said, I think there's quite a few mistruths being said out in the community. I think it's a difficult one in terms of the officers and the performance criteria that they've had to look at and in terms of their justification. And I also feel that it's quite difficult in terms of Alderman James' motion. He does have some points that are credible in relation to the performance criteria. However, there are also aspects of the motion that do concern me. For instance, where it is noted in the reasoning that the existence of a locked building between the public open space on the land and the public open space on the water reduces the amenity and use of the adjacent public land. I have concerns in relation to that. I don't have the evidence for that. Also, Part C, there's no demonstrated need for an additional jetty in this location. I'm unsure that that's actually a planning reason for looking at refusing this particular application. And the other one, there's no demonstrated need for a building in this coastal location. I also don't believe that that's a planning refusal requirement. So I must admit I'm quite torn with this one. I don't feel comfortable with the size of the particular development, proposed development. And as Alderman Mulder has said, that it appears to not actually meet the requirements in the performance criteria nineteen point three point five. So I have to balance out which way I go. Normally, I would look very carefully at the officer's recommendation. The officers are experienced planners and they spend a great deal of time looking at the requirements of the planning scheme. However, I do feel uncomfortable with this and I do feel that there are some planning grounds on which to support a refusal. So in this case, I will be going with the refusal of Alderman James.
Thank you. Right of the vote, would you?
Yeah. No, I'd seek council support.
Thank you. So the motion is for refusal of the jetty. All those in favour? Against?
Alderman Blomley is against.
The motion is carried. Moving on to eleven point three point two, it's a development application at Seventh Douglas Street, Bell Reef, two multiple dwellings, one existing and one new. If I could have a move on second please. Thanks, Alderman Mulder. Second, Alderman Newington. Alderman Mulder?
As per the officer's recommendation.
Do you wish to speak to Alderman New?
Uh, I would.
Other speakers? Okay, so I'll put the recommendation for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour?
I'm just waiting for Alderman Blomley's answer.
Thank you.
Um, same title?
Carried unanimously. Moving on to eleven point three point three, development application at fourteen, the meter court Harrow for dwelling and ancillary building. Thanks, Alderman Mulder. Second, Alderman Newington. Alderman Mulder?
Mr. Mayor, I'll note that, that although it's recommended for approval, it is quite clear that in its current form it's not going to be built because of the Part Five agreements. We've been down this path before and the result is a revised building application, that, an adjustment to the building application which does conform to the Part Five agreement requirements. So without having to hash all those issues again, I'm supportive of the officer's recommendation but in recognition that insofar as it needs to conform to the Part Five agreement, that what we're approving here tonight is not going to be...
Alderman Newington?
No, I'm for Mr. New.
Other speakers? That case of the motion which is a planning approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Alderman Blomley's in favour? Uh, carried unanimously. Moving on to eleven point three point four, it's a development application, one hundred and forty-five, one hundred and sixty-three Pass Road for a hundred and twenty-six lot subdivision. Noting the recommendation is to undertake community consultation. Could I have a move on second please? Alderman Newington? Second, Alderman Mulder? Would you like to speak to it?
I don't say that, you know, it tends to be appropriate. You know, sometimes things don't always work out as they're planned and it's a perfect opportunity for the proponents to look at, you know, changes that have happened over the last few years and more recently and also for the community to have a little bit of input into, into that. And I think with a bit of consultation, the opportunity to come back to us will come up to something that, that'll be suitable to everyone, so I encourage everyone to support this one.
Thank you, Alderman Mulder.
Yes, I think it's appropriate that the community consulted because this whole development has had a history. It was going to be a gated community and then with the resistance from the community and everything else, it was going to be interconnected and I'm pleased to say that it is interconnected and all the rest of it. But a key part of it was always going to build that interconnection. We have to complement, enhance and increase the social cohesion inside what has largely become a ghetto. And here's an opportunity, it's going to be surrounded by private houses and at each step of the road, we have been driving, striving very hard to make sure this development's integrated. And here was a community that was given an opportunity. The basis of this was, you know, community facilities and those sorts of things which were all part of it. My great fear is that if we start now shuffling around and the community's got a say to this, we're placing a great lot of trust that these things will eventually be built because we're in no position to require them to be built unless it's through the staging process. And I think the community have a right to have a say on that and I'd be very interested to see the reasonings why we can't go to this, then we don't go to that. But that, that's a matter for a future, for a future council meeting. At the moment, we're going out to ask the community for their views on this matter and, and I think that's a really good way to go.
Other speakers? Alderman Kennedy?
Yes, nothing much more to add to Alderman Mulder's comment, but I think what we're being asked to do is to approve community consultation on the matter before us, considering the request to vary the master plan and staging. And I'm very happy with that as long as we make sure we do consult thoroughly and get this right.
Thank you. Alderman Blomley has a...
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Blomley has sent in the following words. "Mr. Mayor, the matter before us this evening is whether this council agrees to the modification of the master plan and staging of the Perranville development at Pass Road. The officer's recommendation also recommends that we undertake community consultation on the matter before considering this request. Mr. Mayor, if council approves the request before us, a total of six hundred and forty-nine residential lots will be developed. These lots will be developed on decent land that is within an easy commutable distance to our state's capital. As we are advised at five point two on page one forty-eight of the report, this is no, there is no statutory requirement to advertise this request before council makes its decision. I am therefore at a loss as to why this approach has been recommended. Mr. Mayor, we are crying out for more housing stock. As outlined in the Saturday Mercury, our population continues to grow largely due to interstate migration and the corresponding demand for housing, particularly in southern Tasmania, rages unabated. Here we have an opportunity to send all the right messages to our community. Not only can we proactively address the housing supply shortage, but we can grow our rate base and enable first home buyers to take advantage of any future extension of a housing stimulus grants. Mr. Mayor, whilst I am fully supportive of the request to amend the master plan and staging plan in the Perranville specific area plan, I am not supportive of wasting rate payers' funds to unnecessarily go through the motions of community engagement, particularly as we are advised at four point four on page one forty-eight of the report. If the request to modify the master plan and staging is approved by council, the assessment of the application will recommend and the proposal will be advertised for public comment. Mr. Mayor, as a council, we need to streamline services and importantly, ensure rate payers' dollars are wisely invested. As such, I do not support the officer's recommendation."
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think probably I need to mention to councillors and also to the outside organisation, and that includes the rate payers' accountants, that in fact this matter has been very contentious and over the years it was flagged, and we're going back now to two thousand and nine, I believe, where in fact the, the proposal of having a, an enclave, and I was quoted at the time of using that word, or a gated community because it was proposed to have an education block within that organisation together with an education training facility in conjunction with the University of Tasmania and the Lord Mayor at the time was here in this place providing support for that. And therefore it did go through a very extensive public test and in, and as a result of that, there were substantial changes to it. And therefore we've had a number of requests or amendments and obviously rezoning to take place and we have now developed to a stage where we are looking at a wonderful development. And I was at the meeting on that occasion down there at Pass Road and I know a number of the other Aldermen who were present as well and we were really, could use the expression tickled pink, I hope is the right word, that this is going to go ahead and, and also too we hope it goes well and smoothly as possible. The fact of the matter is because of the nature of what has happened in the past, this, the motion that the council officers have put forward is a good one. It is a good one on the basis that it's going to be consulted by the community prior to determining the master plan. Now, there's no problem with that. We may spend a few dollars, but at the same time, we're keeping the community up to speed and also too, there would be some of those persons in the community who in fact had reservations at the time because of that proposal which I mentioned earlier. So, Mr. Mayor, this is a great motion and before I conclude, I would like to pose a question through you to Mr. Graham, Chief Engineer, if I can use that term, and that is, Mr. Graham, is it possible, I know we are looking into the future here, but is it possible that sometime down the track, the developers may be able to contribute to upgrade some of Pass Road up to the boundary of their development, which putting basically a knuckle council to not have to eventually down the track pay for the substantial cost of upgrading Pass Road in its entirety?
Three, Mr. Mayor. As part of the development, there are required to provide a roundabout at the intersection with Pass Road, but I believe that that's the limit necessary of, of the requirements on the subdivision.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Walker? And then Alderman Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In a different era, I probably would have taken a bit of a deep view on this because I'm not entirely convinced that some of the ancillary aspects to this are likely to reach fruition. But that has to be weighed up with the current environment we'll be faced and that is a dire shortage of housing and land opportunities, especially for the first home buyers. And I'll note that when this matter was first coming for a rezoning, well before my time, there wasn't a lot of services in the immediate vicinity, you could walk right up to Harrow Gardens, I guess, but very soon, one hopes, this development as it proceeds is very close to walking distance to the new supermarket and our precinct, so it's a logical area to see developed and weighing things up the risk of those ancillary aspects not coming to fruition, I suspect will be outweighed by land coming ready to market that's desperately required. So I hear what Alderman Blomley has said and some may agree with him, but I suspect that just on others on, it's probably more fair to support this motion as it currently stands.
Thank you. Alderman Pierce?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually agree with the last two speakers one hundred percent. And as Alderman James said, when this initially came out, it was very contentious. So I'm actually pleased with this recommendation of the officers. I think the consultation is a great thing in this case because I... I think the consultation is a great thing in this case, because I can tell you, and Alderman James can tell you, when this first came up, very contentious.
Absolutely. Thank you. Other speakers?
I mean, bottom line is, we need to make it happen as soon as we possibly can. I mean, when I find out, some people I know that have bought blocks down there, and I know what they're paying in that area, it's like, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a block through there, which is probably great for the developers, but I mean, it's a tough gig for the young kids coming through trying to get their first house these days before they even start building the actual house. So, anything we can do to make it happen is great. But I also have concerns about, even though there was a lot of public open space as part of the future development, I think it's important, from our perspective as a council, and we did this with the holiday retirement village in Gilston Bay, I think it's also important that we do have an opportunity to look at the public open space provisions, including the parks and playgrounds and those sort of things, which, you know, while the developers may look at it as a cost at the beginning, I mean, I see it as an investment in the value of the properties and the chance, and I suppose I'm telling them they're going to increase the price by doing that, which is probably not the thing that we want, but at least they might get a better block. And, you know, I think it is important that we look at the livability of some of the suburbs that we're creating, creating huge swathes of houses without having those playgrounds and parks and recreational areas. And I mean, I haven't looked closely at this one in relation to what's planned with the recreational spaces and how that could work into the existing beginning stages, the first stages they're proposing. You know, improving the quality of life for the people living in our city is an important aspect of our roles, and I think that if we can do that, but also be aware of trying to make it happen as sooner rather than later, we'll hopefully be getting a win for everyone. And I encourage everyone to at least support this and make that happen.
Okay, so the motion for the chair is that we undertake community consultation prior to determining a request to amend the master plan. All those in favour? Against? Alderman Mulder is against. The motion is carried. Moving on to item eleven point three point five. A development application at eight four nine South Arm Road, Sanford, for an eight-odd subdivision. Do I have a move on a second please? Alderman Newington, thank you. Do I have a second there? Alderman Mulder, thank you. Alderman Newington, would you like to speak to it?
I'm just reading, Mr. Mayor. I mean, it's an area, there's, you know, we've got some sections of, you know, the gradual creep of, you know, properties, you know, broad acre estates, not so much a estate, but some land that can only help to improve some of these areas and the maintenance of some of the natural vegetation. You know, most likely we'll see some people come in and add some vegetation to these areas and improve the look, where we have a bit of a disjointed approach to certain this area to a certain extent. People want to live in these sort of locations, you know, it's certainly going to improve, you know, development in our city, opportunities for people to come and live here, which they all seem to want to do, which is great. So, I think it's a, you know, something that is inevitable in some of these locations, and I think that the plan with this is something that we should be supportive of.
Thank you. Alderman Mulder?
Mr. Mayor, my concern over this ever-decreasing backyards and places for kids to play is well known, but they are not planning considerations, and therefore I will be supporting them.
Okay. Other speakers? Okay, so I put the motion, which is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Alderman Mulder is in favour. Carried unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven point three point six is a development application at thirty-four Clinton Road, Gilston Bay, for thirty-three multiple dwellings. Happy to speak to you. Thank you, Alderman Mulder. Second, Alderman Newington. Alderman Mulder?
I repeat of the last contribution.
Thank you, Alderman Newington.
Yeah.
Other speakers? Alderman Mulder? I'll take Alderman James first and come back Alderman Mulder.
Mr. Mayor, I think some of the comments that have been made by the member of the public that made a representation earlier this evening is quite appropriate. I met with a number of these residents about three weeks, two or three weeks ago, and their concerns were, and I think, looking at page two two four, the, one of the key matters was in relation to infrastructure capacity and also the traffic. Now, in the officer's recommendation, there is a reference to the fact that the, a building permit will not be issued, and I'm quoting on page two two five, paragraph three, a building, and I quote, "A building permit will not be issued for the development until such time as a certificate of title for the boundary adjustment approved under that plan has been issued and a copy provided to council." Now, I put a question, posed a question, I should say, to Mr. Lovell on Friday's briefing about this, and I dwelt on this point about the titles not being issued, and in fact, the Land Titles Office was contacted at the time of preparation of this report, and advice was received that there was a lack, a backlog of registrations to be actioned. There were no issues raised by the Land Titles Office in relation to the registration of the seal plan and schedule of easements. Now, the comment I received, and I hope I have his response as he said, was that the question of title to a land, if title's not granted, then in fact, this thing falls over. Now, okay, it's okay to say that they made contact with the Land Titles Office, and there's been a comment made that there's a backlog of registrations. Now, doesn't that imply, and I know it's really a long bow, but the fact of the matter is that this particular title has not been issued, and it's integral to the part of this development because it's doing with boundary adjustments between number thirty-two and number thirty-four in Clinton Road. Now, that is fundamental to this development. If the title's not issued...
Alderman James, you would like to explain why it's fundamental from a planning point of view? It's quite possible to issue a planning permit with these other matters to follow afterwards, and that's quite common.
Yes, it is, it is, and that does happen. But look, condition number three is stating that a building permit will not be issued until such time as the title adjustments has been approved by the Titles Office, and that's in the condition there.
That's advice, I think, not a condition.
No, on page two two five, three, it states that, and that's quite important, that's why I'm speaking to that particular matter, Mr. Mayor, in the fact that I think there is a problem here in relation to this. The other matter that I would like to raise is in relation to the TIA. In a lot of instances, and it was mentioned by the person who made their representation earlier, that it depends on, it seems in this case, that a TIA was not required because council's development officer, engineer, development engineer, was of the view that there wasn't a need for one. Now, what I'm concerned about is that this very, very tight corner of Clinton Road is a very, very difficult location for a number of developments, and thirty-three developments to, even though they're staging, but that doesn't necessarily defeat the purpose of this access. And the TIA was not done. I would have thought in the circumstances that there was, and there was a requirement, and I would have thought that the council officers, as they've done in the past, Mr. Mayor, have sought extra information from the experts to determine as to whether or not a TIA or an assessment in particular, relation to this particular matter, was required. There's those two matters that I think are integral to this particular proposal, and I will not support the recommendation.
Thanks, Alderman James. Alderman Mulder?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Mulder states as follows. "Mr. Mayor, the development application before us this evening is for the staged development of thirty-three units in a well-established residential area, an area that I know particularly well, having lived on Clinton Road, Gilston Bay for some twenty years ago. As we are advised, the proposal satisfies the relevant requirements of the planning scheme and therefore has my full support. However, as an addendum, I feel compelled to place on the record my concern with the performance, or rather, the non-performance of the Land Titles Office in this matter. Frankly, the outdated reliance on hard copies is unnecessary, and this situation so clearly demonstrates causes time delays between exchanges of documents and lodgment of titles. This situation has compounded over the past six months due to COVID, as there is a significant backlog of titles awaiting approval due to the logistical difficulties associated with staff working from home and the inability to process digital plans and documents. Put simply, the antiquated modus operandi of the Land Titles Office is a major handbrake on economic development in our state and must change."
Other speakers? Right reply, Alderman Mulder? Oh, sorry.
That's all right. I'll be brief. There's the traffic concerns that were raised, and I can understand why representatives have done that and worked through it. We've seen a lot of activity in areas such as this, because really, the only place at the moment where development can be a threat is in general residential, and it is a cause of conflict, but there's a change in the certain aspects. On playgrounds, there's little to go against this recommendation, but again, it's a timely reminder that we really do need some strategy and then subsequent dialogue around the inner residential zone, so that more of the development that's required around servicing downsizing, people wanting to downsize and aging fast can occur, freeing up other state dwellings for that, et cetera. So, this is one of the issues that's facing our growing needs of talent, and it's just another situation where we'd benefit from reflecting on it, but I will support the motion.
Thanks, Alderman Walker. I think Alderman Mulder, right reply?
No, Mr. Mayor, except in terms of the comments made in relation to the Land Titles Office, this is not new, and it has happened before, and it is actually to the internal developer, because as we found out with the land at the top of Tollard Drive, where subdivision was approved, and it was necessary to approve that subdivision because of agreement with the likely extension of Tollard Drive and Playarm Grove, and it would be very silly for council to build those roads without providing the accesses and the services at that particular time. And I do share the frustration, because I think from memory, the now-late Mr. Pavlidis, who was the developer of Tower of Pipe, was extremely frustrated. I think it took two and a half years before he could sell a single block that was fully connected with services and everything else because of the Land Titles Office. Now, I'm not too sure what is meant by the modus operandi, but I would suggest that the correct word is antiquated processes in an important office such as that is an absolute disgrace, that we should have to be putting through this, and that land that should be available isn't being done. So, the processes and procedures in there are certainly do for overhaul, and they have been that way for a long time.
So, the motion for the chair is approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Alderman Mulder is in favour. Against? The motion's carried. And that concludes our business, the planning authority tonight. The next item is eleven point five point one, Spit Farm Road, stormwater drainage. Council staff are seeking to allocate, or receiving increased allocation of funds to complete the project. Alderman Pierce, thank you. Alderman Kenney. Alderman Pierce, would you like to...
Mayor, I do think reading the papers, it's pretty straightforward, so I hope that Alderman would support the recommendation.
Thank you. Alderman Kenney. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Would first and foremost, Mr. Mayor, just like to, I think, probably reassure Alderman Pierce and myself, and that's a funny way of putting it, that those works in Alenga Street, Corella, have in fact solved the problem, and perhaps I could throw a question through you to Mr. Graham, and seek Mr. Graham's assurance that the very extensive and expensive works that were undertaken in Alenga Street, Corella Street...
Look, I'm just wondering if this is relevant to Spit Farm Road?
It is, because...
Well, I shall wait your explanation.
It is, because I have been trying to get some funds through council on Spit Farm Road, and therefore I just wanted assurance that Alenga was in fact tidied up, and I think my question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Graham is, Mr. Graham, given the amount of discussion we've had with Mr. Feliciano of Corella, has that, has the works satisfactorily solved, if possible, to whatever extent, the water problems that he and the adjoining neighbors had in relation to that?
Through, Mr. Mayor, the stormwater works for eighty-six Alenga Street and upstream of that have been complete. They were required because there were under-capacity issues with existing stormwater serviceings along properties through that area. In terms of the property owner of property mentioned, they won't completely solve that person's property because their underground, sorry, their subfloor space is well below where the stormwater line was replaced. So, groundwater will still come in through underneath our line that we've upgraded, and they will be affected at times during heavy rainfall periods.
Thank you. I see, and I support the recommendation.
Thanks, Alderman James. Alderman Mulder?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Mulder provides as follows. "Mr. Mayor, council has a clear responsibility to ensure fit-for-purpose stormwater infrastructure. As we are advised, there is an eighty thousand dollar shortfall in the existing budget to deliver the additional requisite infrastructure to effectively manage the flood risk to private properties on Spit Farm Road. As we continue to operate within the parameters of our balanced budget, it is pleasing to see Mr. Graham and his team identify savings in two other infrastructure projects and for the required funds to be redeployed to the Spit Farm Road Stormwater Improvements Project. I support the officer's recommendation."
Thank you. Other speakers? Right reply, Alderman Pierce?
No, it's a committee, it's a straightforward...
So, the motion is that we increase the allocation to the stormwater project, Spit Farm Road. All those in favour? Alderman Mulder is in favour. I think that's carried unanimously. Alderman Kenney, did you wish to...
Thank you, sir.
Eleven point five point two, South Oval Master Plan. Motion is actually in five sections there, apart eighty. I intend to vote on each of those at Suri Adam, but I'd like to contain it to one debate at the start, and then we run five different, otherwise we could be here all night, five by five by twelve.
I appreciate that, but I also wonder why, are we disenfranchising Alderman Kenney this way, because she only has a conflict of issues on one of the items, yet we're denying her vote doing this one more?
We could bring her back in for the voting, but for the debate, one out of the five. I see where you're coming, that if we had five debates...
I would like to contribute some of this, anyway. But that's the procedure in the office, as you say.
Look, in the interest of time, I think it's appropriate that we try to streamline it to one debate if that's taught possible.
And it's Alderman Kenney to object to that, I'm afraid.
And she didn't. Okay, so, could I have someone move the officer's recommendation to get this on the table? Move it and second it, and then we can have the debate.
Thanks, Alderman Mulder. Second, Alderman Newington. Thank you. Would you like to open the debate, Alderman Mulder, please?
Well, I have plenty to say in the summing up. I think it's an appropriate master plan. I have some few concerns about some of the noise mitigation measures, in the fact that if our experience has anything to go by, if the skate park doesn't need noise mitigation, the men's shed certainly will. So, I think there needs to be some thought given in the master plan, perhaps, as a result of some community consultation, about whether the men's shed is an appropriate inclusion in this particular area, and if so, what we're going to do about the noise mitigation and the situation at the Sunshine... the Sunshine Recreation Centre where I'm on that committee, um, is a classic example. So, um, apart from that, I think, um, this is no time to be amending the master plan on the run. Um, and, uh, but, um, so anyway, I, I commend them all and, um, and, uh, and I can foreshadow that the motion foreshadowed, which is an amendment, I guess, will require the consent of myself and my mover and it would be very churlish of me not to give that if I've got the procedure correct.
Thank you, Alderman Mulder. Alderman Edmonds?
Uh, thank you. Uh, just like to echo, um, to use an awful pun, um, the words of the mover, that the noise attenuation for the men's shed is a extremely high priority for myself and I'm sure for many others. Had a few representations about this one, um, quite late in the piece over the weekend and a concern that people had, um, read the report and took that to mean that if there was money for an earth burn, there wouldn't be money to progress the play space. Um, my understanding, and I'm happy to be corrected by an officer, is that this is money that comes from the budget in the same way that, you know, travel for an interstate conference or catering or any other council dollar would be spent. I guess my point is there's no South Arm line item in the budget. It's not a zero-sum game with the way the money is spent. It's a City of Clarence budget and it's adjusted all the time. For instance, I've moved a motion about getting all access swings put in outside of the budget cycle and they were installed at Simmons Park. I moved a motion about having live-streamed council meetings which had budget implications, but it was still able to be get done. Uh, we moved a motion to donate to the New South Wales Bushfires, which required a budget update and it was done. I'm really, my fear is how much, um, the stakes have raised on this, uh, in this area for some, but I really still think there's a role for us as elected representatives to step back, take a deep breath and thread the needle on this one. We aren't necessarily here to pick sides. We're here in part to take the concerns of the residents and try and solve them, not necessarily fan them. With the right vote tonight, we can help resolve conflict while delivering a deserved public space that can be enjoyed by people in South Arm and beyond. I think the officers have gone to a lot of effort back and forth, taking feedback from around the table and they've come back with the compromise that we asked them to come back with. So for that reason and noting my concerns about noise with the men's shed, I am happy to support each step of the recommendation.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Yes, look, I'm a little bit confused, Mr. Mayor, with what we were doing here, but it looks like we are debating, um, A, B, C and D.
And E.
Uh, oh, sorry, and E, yes. Sorry, and E, yes. Of course, that's probably the most important part of it. Um, and therefore we're not going through each of those parts because otherwise we'd be hit, the cows come home, I think, is the expression. So look, having said that, look, there has been a lot of debate. I'm okay and I take, um, Alderman Edmund's comment in relation to the, uh, noise attenuation that may or may not be a problem with the men's shed. But I think in principle, uh, it, it, it obviously needs to be included because there has been the demand and support from the community, from those persons who are of that age that obviously work and would like to be occupied within that facility. The second part of it is of course the council adopts, uh, revises the plan to include a modified play space and surrounds. Uh, and that, I think, is probably one of the key parts of this that needs to be, uh, considered. And council adopts a revised plan to remove the hitting wall in the hardstand area. We can't have it all. It'll be like, uh, a circus, you know, you go from one place to the next, to the next, the next and you, all of a sudden, there's no, no space on the ground. It'll be just, uh, a little bit in the middle and, and it'll lose all its, its character. And finally, part D. I support part D. I have supported part D and I know there is cost. And I have read all of those communications from some of these wonderful people at South Arm who I've had dealings with over the last thirty years and one of whom has been a representative in a, a very interesting magazine, but that goes without saying, and she has been very supportive of not approving or seeking my support not to, uh, allocate or, uh, continue with the earth burn with the paling fence, uh, obviously. But look, there has been a lot of, um, uh, surveys done on this. Um, there's, uh, uh, there was, um, fifty-six percent when the survey was done that, um, that was in favor of some, uh, form of noise attenuation compared to forty-four that's, that say do nothing. And also too, that the council has, over the years, been involved in the, the question of, um, having experts come in and it was even identified in that, at the Planning Appeals Tribunal that there was a problem with the noise and therefore was, there was some obligation on the planning authority to take that on board and do something about the noise as part of that, um, uh, resolution from the, uh, the Planning Appeals Tribunal. I think it's about time we dig deep and we spend money in, in circumstances. I was supportive of the ten thousand for the Lord of Dale because I believe that was a core project and I had supported it and I believe this is a core project. We spent a bucket of money on the, uh, skate park at, at Rosney and I think from memory it was over a million dollars and I, some of those members, I can't remember exactly, Alderman Pierce, but it, you know, that is a tremendous facility. I know that is located close to a school, open space, but this is a key plank within the community and it's providing a, a, a wall or attenuation wall to reduce the noise. So those people that are directly affected have some, have some opportunity to be able to be, uh, feeling that the council is prepared to spend some money and therefore they are, they have their concerns and also what the surveys have produced over the years, that the council needs to do something to, uh, to implement attenuation. I am in favor of A, B, C, D and of course, Mr. Mayor, D.
Thank you, Alderman James. Any other speakers? Alderman Bonverto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm supportive of A, B, C and E. I'm not supportive of D and I have circulated an alternative motion to all of the arguments this afternoon, which reads that council maintains the status quo of the South Arm Skate Park, i.e. no additional sound mitigation works are considered and it does not adopt the officer's recommendation D. And I foreshadow that if D is lost when we actually voted at Siriata. I think it's really important to note as far as the men's shed is concerned, that the men's shed is operating now. It just doesn't have a building. It has over seventy members. It's had an AGM recently. It's done, the committee has been working with council for a considerable period of time in relation to the design of the shed in this particular location. The committee is very mindful of the noise attenuation issues and is working with council to ensure that that is not a problem as far as the community is concerned. It's important to note that nine of the members of the shed actually live in the Calverton Place area and also Harmony Lane and are supportive of the location where it is actually on the master plan, the latest iteration of the master plan. In relation to the skate park, it's important to note that six properties, residents in six properties have made noise complaints. It's also important to note that a qualified person actually performed a noise monitoring of the skate park as was required by the Resource Management and Planning Appeals Tribunal and it was found that there was compliance with the noise limits imposed in condition four of the planning permit and that no noise attenuation measures are required to be implemented. It's also important to note that the JTA report February twenty twenty noted that no noise boil is required to reduce noise levels to below the sleep disturbance criteria under typical conditions. And the officer's report notes that any noise reduction is subjective in the way it's perceived by residents. As Alderman James pointed out, there were a number of respondents or participants to the survey. He's actually noted that fifty-six percent wanted some sort of noise attenuation. I think it's important to note that you can use figures in all sorts of ways and I'm going to turn it around and say that forty-four percent, almost half of the participants, the eighty-eight participants, were in support of no additional sound mitigation. And it's also important to note that we have had emails and, and one of them at least made it clear that if the community had known what the cost is likely to be, it's pretty likely that there would have been a lot more that were not in support of sound mitigation. There's a number of reasons in the report, in the actual report rather than the recommendation, that note that the paling fence is not going to be in line with crime prevention through environmental design features. That also with the option that's been considered by the officers, it's actually going to cost around about twenty thousand dollars to engage a designer and there's going to be considerable work needs to be undertaken by our officers as well. So that's over and above the cost of actually implementing that option.
Thank you, Alderman Bonverto. Other speakers? Alderman Warren?
Um, thank you. Um, by chance, I was speaking to a woman a couple of weeks ago who told me that she'd sold her house and moved because of the skate park. Um, she didn't know that I was on council. Um, she said there was another family who would probably do the same and were just waiting for the outcome of tonight's meeting. We've received a lot of correspondence from members of the community saying how much they enjoy the skate park. Similarly, we've had a lot of correspondence from residents, six in particular, um, who live near the skate park, saying that it has turned their lives into a living hell. I find it really problematic that a number of Aldermen in this chamber use expressions like squeaky wheels and they'll never be happy. I even heard one say it would be good if those who didn't like it just left. So I ask you, what right do we have to inflict such misery and expense on a number of people that they believe their only option is to sell their homes and move? How many people are we prepared to let suffer? Because we're told that not everyone has a problem. So is it okay for half a dozen to have their amenity and quiet enjoyment of their homes ruined if everyone else is happy? Or is it, is it ten or maybe a hundred before we care enough to take action? Or is it two thousand, like another matter that's being discussed here tonight? I have no problem with the skate park. I only have a problem with its location. I too have a problem with the large amount of money we're obliged to spend to address the problems that this council created, which we could be spending on other facilities for the whole community. I agree with those members of the community who think the residents still won't be happy because we have no guarantee this solution will work. If people are still living, um, if people are still in a living hell, of course they won't be happy. I would much rather we stopped throwing good money after bad and started again at a location that is not in the middle of a quiet residential neighbourhood. But if that's not an option, we are morally obliged to do everything we can to improve the lot of those residents whose lives we've ruined.
Any other speakers? Alderman Blomley? Alderman Blomley?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure we would all agree that it is absolutely essential we get this right. The South Arm Oval Precinct is a magnificent area for residents of South Arm and the surrounding peninsula communities to enjoy and I'm delighted to see the men's shed project progress to the next stage. Likewise, it is reassuring to know that, that feedback from the community has delivered the inclusion of a play space and surrounds. I note the reasons for removal of the hitting wall and hardstand area and endorse this approach. However, in all good conscience, I cannot and will not support any further action or any further expenditure of ratepayer funds to indulge the demands of a small, very small band of aggrieved residents who have from day one opposed the highly popular community asset that is the South Arm Skate Park. As we claw our way back out of the devastating impact of COVID nineteen and rebuild our community through prudent financial management and fiscal restraint, our primary responsibility must be to ensure ratepayer funds are responsibly invested. With this in mind, how could we seriously contemplate erecting the suggested earth burn and fence? To be honest, I'm staggered that this council has seemingly been held hostage on this issue. Really, it is beyond me how we have landed in this spot. As we are advised on page three hundred and two of the report, the indicative cost of the suggested earth burn and fence in the, is in the vicinity of between two hundred thousand dollars to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Frankly, this is how well and truly beyond, this is now well and truly beyond ridiculous. Mayor, I'm delighted to support recommendations A, B and C and E. However, I strenuously oppose recommendation D for the reasons just outlined.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, B, C and E all a tick and on we go. Recommendation A, I echo the, the points raised by others that, um, there is a degree of discomfort around potential noise aspects. Uh, I'm supporting it because of the term in principle, in principle. Uh, I think the concept of the shed is a good idea, but, uh, we're gonna need some real comfort around the, the noise aspects of it. And I think they can be mitigated if the design is done right and done right from the start. Um, the main game in town is pointed, uh, and, uh, I am the only old one that sits in this chamber consistently and every time, uh, opposed the master plan that incorporated the skate park for this area. It was a mistake and I think that if all Aldermen put their hands on their hearts now, they might not have, uh, been as enthusiastic about supporting it as they were in part. They may not have, uh, voted through the funding and awarded the contract in late, uh, or early twenty one there. But we are, we're in, uh, we have a one million dollar skate facility just across the road from this here. Uh, there have been some antisocial aspects towards it from time to time, but I have received not one concern around noise. Not one, because we put it in the right place. We put it in the right place. And we didn't put it in the area with, uh, next to no ambient sound, which is what was the case here. Um, the residents that are affected by this are completely tormented and have been done so for a long time. And I concur with all the points that Alderman Warren hastened on this. Um, there's another crowd that also, uh, didn't have a house there, but their, their big weekend allotment was being over the golden camp on their block, which, uh, pretty much adjoined the site. Um, that's, that whole aspect of their lot has just been ripped up. We spent so much money putting a skate facility in an area where it didn't really fit. There appears to be back-solving around the noise aspects as the beginning of the past and we can't do everything for everyone. Uh, there is, this area is paradise. Um, and, and I, it's, we're, it's really been, um, deteriorated by the, by this coming in. Not everything and not everyone can have everything. We can't build a beautiful surf beach at Mornington. Um, and I think if we'd spent a third of the skate park dollars that have gone into this at. And I think if we'd spent a third of the skate park dollars that have gone into this at Lordedale, then that region would have a brilliant skate facility. We've spent so much money on this because it is so highly problematic. And it does hurt. It does hurt in these constrained times having to allocate more money. But this is a safety matter. This is a matter of grave importance to the people that are perpetually disturbed by this. That was entirely predictable. Here it has come. And don't read the report the wrong way. There is a majority for noise attenuation. To try and do the first pass the post thing is a little bit cute. I remember it being done with walking tracks along the South Arm Highway where there was a choice above the road, below the road, on the foreshore. And then you first pass the post, then suddenly the foreshore is the way to go. But that's another story. We have to do this. How are we going to fund it? We have three years interest-free cash from the state government. This is an infrastructure project. It's a health and safety issue. And I actually say that those residents that are requiring it are not being unreasonable. I think a case could be made if people were of a mind to just get this thing ripped up and removed. They're not asking for that. They're asking for some sort of remediation so there can be a degree of noise attenuation that is sorely needed. So I urge people, I urge people to vote for D and vote for A, B, C and E as well.
Other speakers? Alderman Newington?
You know, it's, it's a contentious one, I suppose, for us tonight, isn't it, for sure? But I mean, look, the issue that we can not do things from time to time that are going to upset some people is not going to happen. We're making decisions like that every day, whether it's to, you know, to increase the, put houses into a, you know, a residential area with, or, you know, extra, high, what do you call it? High density living, you know? I mean, we're making those sort of decisions every day. So I suggest that we don't do that and we can't ever do that is not right, you know? We have to be able to do that because we're not going to be able to keep everyone happy all of the time. Now, I mean, I can see both sides of this, but we also have a responsibility to do that thing and consider the implications of the decisions we make. And I can see where James comes from in relation to whether it was or wasn't the right side. But then, you know, the comment you made about why didn't we do more at Lordedale? I mean, I look at Lordedale and those houses are just as close there as what they are at South Arm. And yet we don't get people in Lordedale saying to us, get rid of the skate park. So, I mean, I'm not saying that's right or wrong or whether we should, you know, necessarily justify a particular stance on this. I'm just sort of pointing out something that I've noticed. I mean, it's probably not as big a skate park, but, you know, it's just a fact. I think we do have to look at, I have concerns about spending a lot of money because I don't know whether it's actually going to make that much difference. Skateboard noise, you know, may not be affected at all by the money that we spend. And I do, even though there is a, you know, plenty of cheaper money out there at the moment, I think we've got to be careful about the decisions that we make. My point about the men's shed, it's as much about the issue there in terms of the soundproofing or whatever of that is, it's as much about the activities that go on in the shed. Now, we can't turn around and say never use a power tool. But I think that's got as much of a role in that, this making it work better in that space as does the sound attenuation as well. So trying to find a balance in relation to that, I think would be good. But the social connected activities that come from having an opportunity for people to gather and meet and, you know, enjoy each other's company and the mental health benefits that come from that, I think, you know, that's a no-brainer to create that for that community. And I think with a bit of, you know, forward planning, I think we can deal with that one, you know, quite easily. As for the other B, C and E, not a problem there. D, I'm, look, to be honest, I'm still sort of fifty-fifty on that. I mean, the only thing that'd give me a bit of comfort would be knowing that before we go and spend any money, that we actually have an opportunity to consider how much that is. And I suppose a chance to look at whether it's actually going to be effective or not. Because that is my major concern, that we're going to spend the money on something and it's still going to be something that people don't like. But, you know, it might sound harsh, but there will come a point where some people won't be happy with it and if they move on, well, like I said, that happens in a lot of situations every day with decisions that we make. And if it gets to the point where it's something that the residents who live next door don't want to stay and listen to that, there's other people that'll be more than happy to move next to an area because they can get opportunity to, you know, grow up next to a skate park. So, you know, that's something that happens every day. It might sound harsh, but it's a reality of life. You know, people make decisions based on wanting to live next to a nightclub area or a restaurant area and not be next to an external area. That's something that does happen and that's a reality of life. But anyway, the majority is pretty straightforward. The spending of the extra money, like I said, I suppose, because we have an opportunity to consider what that is down the track, I'd probably think that I'd be supportive of looking at that. But, you know, they have to be pretty well convinced that it's going to actually make a difference. And, you know, the actual cost of it and how it fits in with our whole budget is something else that I've sort of got to consider when we get to that point as well.
Thank you. Other speakers? Robert Clough?
Just an interesting range. I'll just pick up the point about somehow or other that the earth burn will be something to do with crime prevention through environmental design. Now, as laudable as that is and as much as I do know about those things, we don't do it everywhere. The point is, is that it's a factor to consider. There's no statutory obligation, as much as I think there ought to be. But it's been one of those guidelines and things. And it's a case sometimes when people are going through these things. We're plucking policies and procedures and things from all over the place. And although they are relevant and they have a bearing, in the words of the planners, they are really not determining factors. Alternative locations, they are always an option. It's not that they've been shut out. It's that they've never been pursued, Alderman Warren. I've said before, the South Arm RSL is a really good place for some of these noisy things. It's nearby, good footpath and cycle and skateboard access, yet it's clear of immediate neighbourhoods. Yet no one has ever sat down with the South Arm Community Recreation Centre. It is a community-parted facility, although it's a private, it's not council-owned. And maybe there ought to be a way. They've got a big golf course there that's hardly used. They've got space around there. I'm sure they would welcome a little bit of revenue to do those sorts of things. And I sometimes think the further we go down this track of spending money, the further we are committed to something to not looking at this option. And that really is a case of sending good money after bad. But that's not what here. There has been no support for that particular approach in the past, despite the fact we flooded it. So we must deal with where we are. There's the question of amenity of this city. And it's something we provide ourselves, you know, a livable city and all the rest of it. And when you hear horror stories like that, all from one person, all from two people, all from five people, then we've got to have a look if we are strategically focused on making this a livable city. It is not, as we keep hearing, saying one of those aspirational targets, nice to have one day. It is something we can work on day in, day out. And if there's ever a vision for a city, it's to be named, it's to be recognised as a livable city, not by some fancy magazine using some Melbourne-based software, but as a survey. If you want to know how it develops, what sort of jobs we do, there ought to be in that survey, how would you rate our livability or what improvements can we make? That then becomes a moving aspirational target. And this is one of those issues where we can stand a chance to do something. That is why I would support the effort. There's also in all the representations and all the argument, some assumption that because we build the earth burn, we're not going to build some of the other facilities.
Thank you, Alderman Warren.
With the leave of the meeting and given the way the debate's gone, I'd like to put A, B, C and D as one motion. And then we can deal with D where all the tension was separately.
Can I suggest that we put A first, then vote Alderman Kendy back in as well?
Trouble is, she hasn't been here for the whole debate, so I'm a bit reluctant to do that.
So she's not going?
She missed the decision.
Sorry?
Point order, it's her decision to actually leave.
It was indeed, yeah.
Point of order, do we know that she hasn't been listening like Alderman Blomley?
I do recall, Mr. Mayor, that I think at one stage you said that you would bring her in for the vote and that was the point I was picking up.
Yeah, the point I made on Friday when I discussed her.
I may have been misadvised.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, in relation to Alderman Warren's comment just now, Alderman Blomley did not actually go out of the row. Did not declare an interest. So that is quite an unfair comparison.
I think you missed my point.
It is inappropriate.
No, my point, if I may, with your, is that she may have been listening to the debate and that was the point you made, that she shouldn't vote because she hadn't heard the debate. We don't know whether she heard the debate.
No, but the point of matter is that on Friday I mentioned I was going to deal with this at Siri Aden and she chose to leave for the whole debate. And on that basis, I'd like to proceed.
So I picked up your comment that you said you would bring her in for the vote.
I didn't say that, no.
But I missed.
Well, I didn't intend. If I gave you that impression, I apologise.
I was either misadvised or misheard, Mr. Mayor, but anyway, I accept it.
Well, it could be either. In that case, I'll put the officer's recommendation for A, B, C and E. All those in favour?
Alderman Blomley's in favour?
That is carried unanimously. I'll now put item D, which is the officer's recommendation for a burn. All those in favour? Against, the motion is.
Alderman Blomley's against.
The motion is carried. Can we recall Alderman Kendy for the next item, please? Thank you for your perseverance through that. Bottom eleven point, let's see. Five point three is that Clarence Plains Master Plan, that we increase allocation for the development of that master plan. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Do I have a second, Alderman Newington? Thank you, Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, we have promised the community a master plan for this area for some years now. And it's proved to be very difficult to A, determine the scope of it and B, organise the people to do it. And I think it's entirely appropriate that we leverage off the knowledge that Mode C and Sea Change Sustainable Solutions have in this area to get this plan done. And in order to do that, we need to reallocate these funds from the youth centre, which we were unlikely to use in the short term. I seek my colleagues' support.
Do. And the second one?
Look, well, obviously I agree with Alderman Chong there. It should have been done a long time ago. The master plan, the lack of a master plan through that area has led to the situation where we have totally neglected them in relation to some of the recreation space, some of the playgrounds, you know, the youth centre itself in relation to the fact that it's more like, well, we've just got this building, what do we do with it? Rather than looking at something that's purpose-built or at least done properly and is, you know, suitable for, you know, twenty-twenty, to have something that's actually usable and, you know, a little bit more appealing for the local youth to use. You know, I think that's the one thing that we should be focusing on in that community to give them not only the health and wellbeing and the mental health benefits that come from having, you know, the recreation spaces, the meeting spaces, the playgrounds, hopefully a ninja trial at some stage soon. And those areas where they can get that community connections going. I mean, I think I've made it clear in the past, I think at times we focus a little bit too much on some of the short-term programme-based approach to some of these community development activities. Now, they have a right off the shore, but I think that, you know, creating a livable community with great playgrounds and sports grounds and the sort of things that we've got in other communities that are really significantly lacking in this, in through Clarence Vale and Rokeby and now into the Clarence Plains area, and to really connect all those communities up, to get the people inside those communities wanting to go into the Rokebys and the Clarence Vales because we have those spaces in there as well. I think that's a major part of what we should be aiming for through this, you know, planning process. You know, my concern is that some of the paperwork and the proposal put together by Mode C Change, you know, there's a little bit too much blowing, well, exaggerating their own qualifications and their experience and all those sort of things. And I just hope they do focus on the community a little bit more than what it seems like. They seem to look like they know everything themselves. And I brought my concerns to the community consultation and engagement with the local community, which is critical in this process, is carried out to the level that I believe it really needs to. And hopefully, at the end of all of this, we do come back with a plan that is something that everyone can be really happy with and we can then start to find the money over the next few years to really right wrong, which is the neglect that we have allowed to happen. And, you know, we really need to do a lot better to give this community, especially with the effect of COVID in the next, you know, twelve to eleven months maybe, you know, some really good spaces for them to interact, socially engage, be physically active and have the sort of things that are in other suburbs that are sorely lacking in this space. So I encourage everyone to support this and I look forward to seeing the, getting the opportunity to have some input into the plan and the development of this over the next coming months.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Molder and then Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to wait until I stand before I'm acknowledged rather than move my arms, but that's fine. Mr. Mayor, there are a couple of things with this and who cannot but support this particular issue. I was a little bemused, might I say, by the actual area of the Clarence Plains Master Plan, particularly in regard to the fact that we've had a lot of debates in this place about the appropriateness of localities. And here is one that basically captures most of the Clarence Plains and Stokel Rivulet's catchment, which is a really good way of identifying a community. And then we sort of wonder how the people at Glebe Hill, sorry, at Hara in the top area there and in both what is known as Glebe Hill and Hara Gardens are feeling about creating an authentic identity and sense of community with their Rokeby neighbourhoods. And I'm all for that. And it would really be interesting to see because the way you do that is by connecting these communities, as you talk about strategies for connecting suburbs from within and resulting from a future four-line South Arm Highway. Now, the fact is, is that the Rokeby side is basically isolated by the South Arm Highway. And there's a really good opportunity here to, as development occurs through there, to start connecting it not only with Clarence Vale, not only with the Glebe Hill and the Hara parts, as will occur, but also my favourite little pet project, which is to run a connector road from Oceana Drive into Sun Ray Court, thereby creating a connection between there, breathing life into that shopping centre and the community facilities that are in there. And not having it as a sort of a cul-de-sac tucked under the highway. And the issue there is social disadvantage. The more you build gap barriers around there, the more you send roads around them so you can get yourself a new postcode, as I had the opportunity to say to a developer the other day. And to his credit, he did smile. But it's about the sense of humility. It's about lifting these suburbs up, not only with facilities for them to do, but with facilities that others can come in and share and with easy access for them to go and share facilities in neighbouring suburbs. That's how integration happens. So I'm all in favour of this, but I'm also saying that, you know, there's a bit of a focus beyond activities for the people in this catchment to do. The integration is to provide reasons for other people to come in and use these facilities. And for these people to be able to move out of their locations and go into it. And the biggest thing with that, Mr. Mayor, is that a lot of these areas, particularly young males, grow up without a decent male role model. And integrating them within neighbouring suburbs with higher socio-economic areas destigmatises them and it shows boys, you know, what, how men should behave rather than picking it up off their own very poor adult male role models, if any, and usually kicking around in themselves. So that's what I understand by integration and movement and ease of movement is a really, really big part of that.
Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question and that is on page three sixty-four. And it refers to seven point three, there is insufficient funds to complete the Clarence Plains Master Plan. Therefore, approval is sought to reallocate funding from the concept design project for the Clarence Youth Centre. for the Clarence Youth Centre to the Clarence Plains Master Plan. Perhaps Mr La Graham can provide me with some assurance that, that given the funds are going to be reallocated from the Clarence Youth Centre to this master plan, is there a little house or a puppy that will be established within the master plan so that the youth centre, and I'm assuming that, that group within the centre will become part of or be included or incorporated within the master plan? Or was it, will it basically fold? Have I really taken this to the nth degree? And perhaps explanation, please, Mr Mayor.
Mr Graham?
Through, Mr Mayor, yes. But in terms of.
Yes, that, that they will be.
Through, Mr Mayor. Through, Mr Mayor. The, the purpose of actually reallocating the, the funds from the Rokeby Youth Centre is the master plan is to determine the function or, and the future function of all council land within the Clarence Plains area. The Rokeby Youth Centre is one of those key areas that the master plan is to address is what is the future function of this place? And it will be one of the key outcomes, actually, of the master plan, so then council can consider what funds should be placed into that particular location so it will serve the, the future needs of the community.
Yeah. Other speakers? Ryder, Alderman Chong?
Just very briefly, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I absolutely agree that the connections in this community are really important. And one of the main groups that this master plan will run through is one community together, which a number of you will know about, and they are very heavily integrated in all, all this community. And it will be interesting when the master plan is done to see whether some of those physical connections actually come up as being seen as important on the ground. Certainly, facilities are seen as very important, and sharing those both within and without the community is seen important. And I guess just to pick up on the youth centre comment, the buildings for the youth centre are hardly fit for purpose at the moment, but it's very important that we do the master plan to, to see what's needed and where it's needed. There's been discussions about maybe it should, be, be, with all the work that we want to do there, as a much closer connection with the school. Who knows what will come out of the consultation? But I think it's very important that we do it, and the community is very keen we get on and get this started. But I seek support.
Thank you. So the motion is that we increase the allocation to the development of the Clarence Plains Master Plan by sixty-five thousand dollars. All those in favour?
All of them in favour?
Carried unanimously. Moving into governance, eleven point seven point one, the recreational orders report that be received and noted. Thank you, Alderman Kendy, second Alderman Walker. Is there any discussion on this item? I've put the motion, all those in favour? Motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to eleven point seven point two, Kangaroo Bay Hotel. Alderman Newington?
I'll move the motion.
And I note Alderman Longley has seconded the motion. So Alderman Newington?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Obviously, a very contentious issue. We've been dealing in this one for a while now. Obviously, it was, it all occurred, a lot of it occurred before my time on council, but it's something I've been following from, from a distance for a long time. The thing about this, I mean, obviously, there's, there's some issues tied up in here, and I'd sort of like to summarise those at the moment and then sort of touch on some of them, and obviously, my colleagues will, will deal with some other things as well as we go. I mean, the, the main one that faces that I, that I'm major concerned about at the moment is the contract and the legal issues that we, we're dealing with here. I mean, there's been a lot of misinformation and misleading comment in the media, and certainly by some of the people asking us to buy back the, the hotel site. And it really comes down to, you know, the contractual arrangements, which I'll go into a bit more detail in a moment. And the thing is, the petition that we received today, and that's why I asked the question early on, because any question can be put forward, but if it doesn't actually deal with all the issues and the implications of certain decisions that people are being asked to sign, if they're not fully aware of the implications of going down that path, I think, you know, we might get a slightly different answer. And I mean, the other side of it too is that, you know, obviously, there's economic benefits associated with the, with the hotel going ahead or not, or us deciding not to allow that to, to, to go through to a ten result. There's the issue about the appropriateness of the hotel or not, and that's something that I'm sure we're going to have a lot of different opinions in the community out there. There's some issues around the process of approval, and once again, I think there's been a fair bit of misinformation out there about, you know, so-called dodgy deals or, or not following community consultation, which I totally reject, and I'll, I'll come to that again in a moment. And then the other thing is too, the alternate uses that people are, you know, asking us to consider as part of the whole process downing through Kangaroo Bay. But I mean, I want to go back to the beginning in relation to the, the contract issues that we're facing here. I mean, I, I go back to the one that, you know, and obviously, we've received some confidential legal advice in relation to our, our position where we sit as a council in relation to the contract that we signed to Shambrood asking for the sale of the land. And the clause six A, which is mentioned in, in the, in the report documents here, which says that, you know, where any provision of this agreement prescribes time limits which things are to be done or approvals received by either party, the other party will not unreasonably withhold consent to a written request to extend any, any such time limit where it is satisfied that all reasonable attempts have been made to comply with the time limit, or that non-compliance is for reasons not within the reasonable control of the party bound by that time limit. Now, the thing there is that a lot of people don't understand that the delays that occurred up until March this year certainly were for things outside of the, of the Shambrood's control. I mean, we all know that, you know, TAFE were ready to step in at the beginning as a hospitality provider, and they, they reneged on that deal. And then the uni stepped in to be their provider, and Shambrood asked us for an extension for another twelve months to look at the redesign of hospitality school, going from a, a hospitality school which was designed around teaching a marista or, you know, the waiters and those sort of things towards a masters level. University degree obviously requires a totally different design of hospitality school and a, and a training area, which is why they asked us for that extension. And I think it was more than reasonable for us to take that on at the time. You know, to go through a redesign of building, get contracts, put the contracts out in the tender, get those tender documents back, assess them, come forward, be ready to go. We were advised by Shambrood that they had gone through that whole process even after COVID had started, and were in a position where they were, they were ready to, to, to make a start. Now, unfortunately, the university have come back and said that they're not in a position to start, and I think we can all reasonably understand why that occurred in relation to, obviously, overseas student numbers, you know, and, you know, hospitality training and those sorts of things, which are, you know, their whole business model built around, you know, the other aspects of their, of their university impacted on their ability to get involved in hospitality school. Now, you know, that, that's been very disappointing to all of us. I would certainly have loved to see the whole project start. And, you know, but I mean, I, I think it's more than reasonable to suggest that these things have happened outside of Shambrood's control, and I don't think we'd be in a position to, to unreasonably, you know, allow them an extension, because I've got major concerns that if we do that, that, that leaves us open to the potential for, you know, legal challenges in relation to that reasonableness of us to go down that path, and not only the capital cost of what the land might be valued at now, because we can only get a buyback at the two point four if they haven't started through their inability to start or something that they chose to do, and that's certainly not the case in this situation. So I think that's a major, that's the major consideration for us in this room. Do we really want to sit here and potentially have to be negotiating to spend, you know, six to seven million dollars or even more of community money to buy back something like this, when there's a very good chance that hopefully in the near future, they'll be ready to start?
Thanks, Alderman Newington. Alderman Longley?
Thank you. Alderman Longley's contribution, Mayor, is, Mr Mayor, whilst controversial, the matter before us is relatively straightforward. That is, this is a contractual issue. It is not, as some would have us believe, an opportunity to revisit the merits of Kangaroo Bay Hotel and Hospitality School. That was settled when the original contract with Shambrood was executed on the twenty-fifth of May, two thousand and seventeen. So, from my perspective, as directors of this organisation, we have a clear fiduciary duty to make a decision that is truly in the best interests of the city, of Clarence City Council. Central to our consideration is the importance of minimising our level of risk. As defined in clause six A, the contract provides for a time extension if all reasonable attempts have been made to comply. Also outlined in this same clause, it is clear the council cannot unreasonably withhold consent to the request for an extension of time. Now, whilst it might be fair to say that some may have doubted TAFE's capacity to deliver world-class hospitality training, no one could possibly have foreseen the devastating impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Plainly put, the unforeseeable circumstances that have prevented Shambrood from fulfilling the contract are not in question. Force majeure is present and, in my view, incontestable. So, in my view, this all turns on what, in all of the circumstances, is the reasonable path forward? As directors of this organisation, it is incumbent upon us to balance the risk of all available options. In the final analysis, agreeing to Shambrood Australia's two-year extension request with additional conditions that will ensure there is appropriate process in place to see the development realised, along with probity issues that did not previously exist, is a good outcome for Clarence and one that we should all warmly welcome. This outcome will provide a level of comfort to all Clarence residents that Shambrood will make every best endeavour to deliver on their promise of an iconic development in our city that will deliver a truly unique and world-class education and hospitality offering. After all, that is what our two thousand and seventeen contract is all about. Mr Mayor, I support the officer's recommendation and urge colleagues to do likewise.
Alderman Molder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Question before us, as previous speakers have rightly said, is whether it is reasonable in all the circumstances to refuse Shambrood's request for a two-year extension to assess the financial viability of this project? Having twice voted against extensions and moved to scale down this development, my predisposition on this question is a matter of the public record. But I have not closed my mind, and I really do eagerly await to see if my colleagues can persuade me otherwise. Give it your best shot, guys. Contrary to the officer's report, failure to grant the extension does not automatically require us to move to buy it back. So, Mr Mayor, as discussed on Friday, I foreshadow a motion to defer that decision, should we vote to not grant this extension? Mr Mayor, the next move is not one for council. The contract says that council shall not unreasonably refuse a request for an extension. So the burden of proving that our refusal was unreasonable falls to Shambrood. This is not a high-risk strategy because it is divorced from the buyback and focuses merely on extension. Now, if the court rules that our decision was unreasonable in light of the pandemic, then Shambrood will be exactly where they say they wish to be, done and dusted. However, if the court rules that it was reasonable, then we can safely move to the buy, to buy back the land at the starting price of two point four million rather than six to eight. If they forego this opportunity, then it will be difficult to argue force majeure should council proceed to execute the buyback clause. And if I'm wrong on all counts, then right next door is council land of similar value that is destined for sale to another developer. So the slate will be even, our fiduciary duty discharged. So, Mr Mayor, I invite my colleagues to persuade me to grant the extension. As my colleagues and Shambrood know, I have worked really hard behind the scenes to get some of the strong conditions into the extension, and I take some comfort from the need to have partners signed up and that construction be well-advanced within the timeframe. But I invite my colleagues to firm up this comfort, because I do not share the optimism that somehow or other this will be different. The history of the site, the longstanding tourism and education environment give me no comfort that a tourism facility will ever work in Kangaroo Bay. It didn't work for ten years before Shambrood, and it hasn't been commercially viable in the last five years. So colleagues, give it your best shot. I have an open mind, I can be persuaded, I am listening. The idea of a Plan B suggests a lack of Shambrood's confidence in this project, however strong their commitment undoubtedly is. But this project is a dead parrot. It is deceased, it has shuffled its mortal coil, it is singing with the choir eternal. COVID nineteen has been blamed for its demise, but this force majeure argument has not been tested. It is for a court of law to decide whether in all the circumstances COVID nineteen was the critical factor that is playing this project. Well before COVID, tourism was in trouble. Well before COVID, the reliance of the university sector on foreign students raised alarm bells. Well before COVID, there was concern over UTAS's financial situation and their aggressive expansion into the home art property market. Shambrood told us they invested ten million dollars in this project, but spending that sort of money before your partners are signed up is a business risk. I sympathise with them, because it was the state government that originally pumped up the grand vision and time and time again have given Shambrood comfort that public-funded entities like TAFE and UTAS would commit. And nothing in the education environment gives me any comfort either. The federal government is increasing the cost of these sorts of soft degrees, and there are three, all three major parties in Canberra that express alarm over Chinese investment in Australia. Then any Plan B will need the approval of the Chinese central government, and it is hard to see how Kangaroo Bay in any form conforms to the Belt and Road Initiative. But I'm hoping to be persuaded, Mr, otherwise, Mr Mayor. Give it your best shot.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Evans?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor and council. The vision for Shambrood's eighty million dollar five-star hotel and training school certainly is a grand one. You can see why those who support it are so dedicated to it. So it must be so bitterly disappointing for those involved to see this project stuck on the architect's drawing board beset by delays. It must be so bitterly disappointing to be incapable of delivering the vision that was touted and approved by those in the previous council. Since then, the delays came early and often. The decision of the previous council then became the business of this one when extensions were sought, which I supported for reasons laid out at the time. When UTAS first started kicking the tyres and coming on board, my feedback to them was clear. If you're going to do it, get on with it. More recently, I've been on the record saying it's time to put up or shut up. Now, tonight, we have to make a decision on another delay, this time two years, to allow for another partner to be sought to deliver the project. I play a bit poker, and this project is what's referred to as a busted flush. It looks great, you've got four diamonds out there, but once all the cards are dealt, you are not even beating a pair of twos. There are no more cards to be dealt, this hand is lost. The land was sold so a project could be delivered. It's not been delivered, it won't be delivered. Their sh four should be bought back. Let's find someone who can do something with it or potentially do it ourselves. If the council does buy this land back, and that's what I'm urging my colleagues to work towards with a no vote tonight, I think people need to be realistic about what's going to happen next. The site's not going to be a swing set and a few barbecues. It's not going to be a parking lot for the odd food van festival. There will be development sought. There will be development sought to activate this land, but it will be development that actually occurs. Tonight, some will argue that nothing will happen on the site if we buy it back. Well, nothing's going to happen if we extend it either. Instead, we'll be back here in twenty twenty-two, two years further behind the eight ball. Has anyone actually considered what extending to October fourteen, twenty twenty-two means? While there are no dates available yet, in twenty eighteen, ballots were sent out by the TEC on October eight. The polls closed on October thirty. We'll effectively be in caretaker mode, so who makes the call then? The next election for our council, we should be about our entire city, the second largest in Tasmania, and debated on all issues relevant to us, risks becoming a referendum on one stalled project in Belref. The council, the project, all part of a circus. While it's not determinant of my vote, has anyone actually thought about who would want that? A lot has been spoken about the force majeure argument, to me, it's not relevant. A project with significant backing from multiple levels of government, approved in two thousand and seventeen, was stuck in the doldrums well before someone ate a bat in Wuhan. It is the will of the council, if it is the will of the council. If it is the will of the council to buy the land back, it should be per the terms of the contract. If the other party is not happy with that, well, they can make their case. It's not anyone's job here to make a legal case for the other side. Any moves to play hardball on a buyback would make a mockery about everything that's been said, both privately and publicly, about good intentions with this site. It is not a matter for me if someone spent $10 million or $10 on this site. The job, indeed in terms of the contract, was to build and deliver or face a buyback. Despite earlier extensions, nothing has been built. The vision was bold, but the vision is not going to happen. The ribbon is not going to get cut. It's over. Colleagues, that's my case for not supporting an extension, and I urge you to join me and others. Otherwise, I guess we'll just see you all back here in two years.
Alderman.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I mean, seriously, who would want to be building a five-star hotel in this climate or investing in hospitality? And the Shambrood consortium, including the coordinator general, have reminded us that tourism and further education are two of the sector's hardest hit by the pandemic. We don't know when or even if they will recover to pre-pandemic levels. They also reminded us that capital cities rarely have successful accommodation across the river because people want to stay in the CBD. Our responsibility as aldermen of Clarence Council is to look after our community and support our local economy. So, what can we do to attract people to Clarence, to visit Clarence? Well, we have wonderful tracks and trails which our community is delighted in rediscovering or visiting for the first time during the lockdown period this year. We have foreshore tracks that are accessible to all. We've seen families, couples and friends out walking, cycling and enjoying each other's company. The top 10 tourist attractions in Tasmania don't include hotels. They invariably include our unique wilderness scenery and heritage such as Richmond and Port Arthur. We're lucky to have Richmond in our municipality, and we understand the importance of preserving and protecting this historic village. So, I ask you, what if we were bold? What if we buy back the vacant land, which now sits like a scar on our waterfront? What if we create a first-class ferry terminal which brings people to the gateway of our city? What if we build our resilience against future economic downturns by supporting a dozen local businesses, shops selling picnic provisions, coffee, hiring bikes, showcasing our local arts, crafts and produce, each employing 10 to 15 locals and ploughing the profits back into the local economy? What if we were to become, what if we aimed to become a destination of choice where people can either arrive by ferry with their bike or hire one here and head off in either direction along our foreshore paths? Or hire a kayak and follow our world-class kayak trail around the foreshore or take a guided excursion? Or just relax in a family-friendly space? What if we were really bold and looked at developing the Belref Fort to its full potential as a landmark heritage site right here on our foreshore trail? What if we developed something really special that all the community can enjoy? The world has changed since this deal was done. We have an opportunity to buy back the land and deliver something that is good for our community and good for our economy. We have the opportunity to leave a legacy that we can all be proud of. Let's start the process of rebuilding our economy now, not in two years' time. Let's buy back Kangaroo Bay.
Thank you. Other speakers. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm sure everybody in this circle has received a huge number of emails asking and seeking our support to not support this extension of time but to also buy back the land in the best interests of the community. There's also been a petition signed by two and a half thousand. And can I say, I haven't actually looked at the petition, but from the number of representations that have been made via email, they cater across the whole of the city, not just the foreshore of Belref, but down at Acton, at Lorddale, at Patago. It's right across the city. So, it's not just a small group of individuals that are saying, look, we do not want this. It's, I think, a majority of those persons who have taken the time to make sure that we get the message that we should not grant an extension of time. I haven't received one request to extend, not one. Now, why is that? Surely, they know that I've been on the council for a while and I'm able to be, you know, sort of a change of mind or attitude if they present the certain facts and figures, but not one has asked or sent an email to me to support the actual extension of time. Council has already granted two extensions of time, extending to 14th of November 19 and at a meeting on the 11th of November, further extending substantial commencement to the 14th of October. It is interesting to note that the building permit for Stage 1A, early stage and site works was issued and finalised by council. However, building permit piling works, Stage 1B, was lodged on the 29th of August 2018. Council officers sought further information in relation to that. That was not provided, hence that building application lapsed. The fact of the matter is that building application would have probably met the substantial commencement definition, and I can quote that, that physical start of works to construct footings, foundations and other ground level and below-level infrastructure relating to the building approval by the permit. That is what is regarded as part of the substantial commencement. The agreement defines substantial development in a different manner to that underlooper. Under the agreement, substantial commencement means a physical start, and building permit 1B would have actually, I believe, made that issue of having made substantial commencement. It didn't happen, and at that point in time, it starts you wonder as to whether or not they really wanted to go with this project or not. The other factor that I would like to draw your attention is that clause 6A relates to the extensions of time, that all reasonable attempts have been made to comply with the time limit, or that non-compliance is for the reasons not within the reasonable control of the party bound by the time limit. As I mentioned, the building permit 1B lapsed. It was not, the information was not sought, and therefore they did not proceed to answer council's questions. Confirmation was provided on the 20th of June that tenders were in place. That is post-COVID-19, when the emergency situation was announced. And after that date, Shambrood made the comment that evolving impact on student enrolments and significant negative impact of COVID-19 across hospitality industry on a global basis, UTAS and Shambrood have agreed that in this point in time, it's not commercially viable to continue with negotiations. I would like to refer you to page 439 of the officer's recommendation and undersee that Shambrood provides acknowledgement that the extension of time and conditions set out above do not alter the buyback provisions contained in the sale development, which will become active from the 14th of October 2022. Now, listen to this, if substantial commencement has not occurred. Now, they can, within that timeline, start with substantial commencement, but that would only entail construct footings, foundations and other ground level and below-level infrastructure relating to the building approval by the permit. In other words, they could start constructing and stop. I believe that's imperative.
I am the chair to deputy mayor and make a few comments on this one myself. Madam Chair, I wish to speak in support of the officer's recommendation, and firstly, I acknowledge the massive petition signed by over 2,000 people urging us to buy back the land. Buy it back has certainly been a magnetic catch cry echoing all over Greater Hobart and well beyond. But I do wonder how many people would have signed a petition which said, buy it back no matter the cost? With the force majeure clause in operation, and we've been given professional advice that that is the case, the buy it back option right now is highly likely to cost council at least the full commercial value of the land, anecdotally between $6 to $8 million and possibly three times what we were paid for it in the first place. Good luck. There might also be other claims, including for legal expenses and costs, depending on the pathway we take in terms of going ahead, including going to court to have them make a decision on force majeure, for example. Many people also signed the petition because they did not want the land sitting vacant for another two years. I submit that by agreeing to the extension, we give ourselves the best opportunity for development to restart on the site because if we bought the land back, we would have to start again from scratch to determine its use, and we've been there before twice. At its feeding on the 18th of October 1999, council received a report on community consultation about the future of Kangaroo Bay. In response, council agreed to prepare a draft planning scheme amendment to provide for a range of tourism, recreational, commercial and residential uses. Council then endorsed an expression of interest process in 2003, seeking potential developers, and in 2004 awarded prudential investments for Piper Unlimited from Melbourne, preferred developer status. Another year passed before it was clear that prudential would be unable to proceed and council would have to start the whole process again, that time seven years after initial community consultation. Now, after a similar process, which this time has lasted for 15 years, we are being asked to urge, in fact, urge to buy back the land again and start for a third time. If our decision is indeed to buy it back, the land is highly likely to be vacant for much, much longer than two years as we work out what we want to use it for, get all the approvals in place, and then find another investor or raise the funds ourselves, as Davenport tried to do with its pineapple setter, the Paranapple setter. Another option is, of course, to do nothing, and that was alluded to by Alderman Mulder when we agreed to defer it tonight. We could start down the road of doing nothing, another way, and that is by, for example, being all locked at Six Hall tonight. I do note that council would have a further six months from the 14th of October to buy the land back or provide a further time limit, should substantial commencement not occur within that period. I also note that if council does not make a decision within that six-month period, the option of buying back will be totally extinguished and Shambrood will own the land unconditionally. My concern would be that if we're unable to make a decision tonight or defer it, what further information could we possibly glean over the next six months by April next year, with Christmas, summer holidays and Easter in between, to inform us on how to make a decision in the next six months? Also, how would it look to the public that has been so engaged in this issue if we simply can't make a decision and keep the can down the road? The only conclusion I can come to is that by agreeing to grant Shambrood's request for a two-year extension is by far the least risk option from a cost point of view, and it provides the best opportunity for something to happen on the site in the next two years. It would also ensure that barring another force majeure, if nothing has happened in the next two years, we can buy it back for the original price of $2.44 million, would then revert back to that option instead of paying up three times as much. So, I urge you all to support the officer's recommendation. It is well thought out. It is taking into account all the risks, and it is the best way forward for council and the City of Clarence.
Thank you, Alderman. Other speakers, please. Alderman Piers.
Thank you, Mayor. I've supported Shambrood in this project for some time now. One thing that worries me a little is I was reading in a daily newspaper where universities in Australia expect to get rid of 26 hours of staff, most of those in Victoria, but it doesn't sound good for universities anywhere. Now, of course, Shambrood started there with Taz-Tafe, and I thought, yes. And then it was Shambrood and University of Tasmania, and I thought, great. But I've got to admit, there's no one more disappointed than to see a white fence round an area, the white fence is up one day, a wind comes down, the white fence is down, white fence is up, and all we've seen is some fielding land, but nothing looks like going. I know Shambrood and the University of big identity. Just because of Kevi doesn't mean they're not working. So, I believe they've had a long time to negotiate this and say, you'd like, Alderman Edmonds said, yes or no? Are you going to do something or not? Now, I had pleasure in supporting Shambrood and this development, but I've got to admit, unlike others, I've just got to the stage where either you start or, you know, let's have it back, let us look at it. I disagree with what the mayor said because I think if we take it back, we could do something. I just wish that either start or say we can't do it. And as I said, I've been glad to support them, I've given extensions, but I'm afraid that I cannot support this tonight. I want a decision. I want them to either do something or say, no, that's finished. And so, I'm not going to support it because I'd rather them say, yeah, we're going to get on with it or we're going to do nothing. But I've just got to the stage where, probably like a lot of other people too, that were sick of seeing an empty site. You're a big organisation, if you really want to do something, start. As a lot of people would know, when this was first brought up to council, I was one of those, like many others, that were not really, didn't really like the Tafe part of the college being where it is. The hotel was fine. I did have some reservations about that, but I just wanted to see something on the site, so I supported it. But now, after waiting and waiting and waiting, you know, they're losing me, I'm afraid.
Other speakers.
From the outset, let me start with the fact that this is before us tonight because the developer hasn't played games. It would have been relatively easy for them to undertake a cursory concrete pour and meet the technicalities of substantial commencement. Such a move might have made our lives easier, but it is to their credit that they don't operate that way. It's also worth noting that the design originally passed by council in my absence in January 2017 was changed and resubmitted after community feedback and engagement with Robert Morrisner. And this was pointed out in one of the representations in the deputations tonight. The previous extension was the result of Taz-Tafe pulling out at the last minute. Taz-Tafe has become a shadow of its former, the Tasmanian State Institute of Technology. And I understand that the developer had a strong preference to form relationships with local entities and education institutions, which led to the arrangement with UTAS, who now have profound COVID-induced commitment issues. And by no means should the impact of COVID on UTAS be understated. It's profound, but it's, and it alone is the cause of the extension request before us today. UTAS, you need to clean your room. I hope that the extension is successful, would also not negate engagement by Shambrood with alternative education providers. I think this is worth exploring. Canberra, with fewer people than Taz, has the presence of four universities, and Tasmania would be better served if UTAS lost its monopoly status. In fact, competition would help UTAS evolve into a better version of itself and regain its previous esteem. And to anyone who thinks socio-economic status is a reason why we don't need any more universities, check yourself out. Is that snobbery or is it merely the soft bigotry of low expectations that bedevils so much of this wonderful island? On a relative basis, our state government has stepped up more than other jurisdictions to stimulate the economy and save jobs during COVID. The level of taxpayers' support is not sustainable on an ongoing basis, and projects like this $80 million one are significant in an economy the size of Tasmania. Now, I'll leave it up to others to decide if it would be deemed a project of state significance, especially if we can't reach a decision tonight, but it's never too late to change your mind as new information is presented in a debate. But it's never too late to change your mind as new information is presented in a debate. The project is a hotel of iconic style. It is not some prefabricated concrete rectangle squeezing in as many rooms as possible. Is the design everything I hope? No. But tonight, any alternate uses proffered are mythical, unbudgeted, uncontested and unconceptualised. This is a recipe for stasis or perhaps a ten million dollar grassy knoll when you take into account all of the costs highlighted by the mayor. There is an awful lot of misinformation about this project and moreover the buyback clause. Despite a few representations trying desperately to argue otherwise, the report makes clear that invocation of force majeure presently rendering the buyback clause obsolete. Most representatives are not aware of this or have been misled that council presently has this option. Chambrord don't want to sell it back for two point four four million, as has been disingenuously suggested that we can still do. If it could be done, then I could totally understand those in our community who dearly believe we should do so and all of those representations that have been made, and I do compliment them on the passion and how they've gone about. But how much debt are we willing for council to borrow to try and buy it back? I don't recall any emails from youth of Clarence imploring us to borrow money and get it back so that they've been paying off this acquisition over future, when they become future ratepayers. Make no mistake, like all levels of governments, debt currently being racked up, they would shoulder the largest repayment burden. For some Aldermen, the political costs of granting an extension outweigh the actual monetary costs of not granting an extension. But I'm not sure where those consistently against this project were on when on November eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, we considered the matter of an extension. Things were cut and dry some eleven months ago. No ifs, no buts. The two point four million buyback clause was on the table and could have been invoked. Back then, Mr. Mayor, several Aldermen were prepared to lift a finger to vote against an extension, but they couldn't be bothered to lift two and draft an alternate motion to invoke the then enforceable buyback clause. Lucky for those Aldermen, the fourth estate in Tasmania have a lot on their plate. Whilst the media should call them out on this, they can probably relax knowing that that level of detail does not easily fit into a news bulletin.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As several Aldermen have referred to, this is probably one of the more difficult decisions we will make in the term of this council. And to echo Alderman Walker's comments, I should like to thank all the community members that have filled out inboxes over the last few weeks. What I'm less happy about in some ways is the misinformation that has been in so many of those emails. It's very distressing that some of the information, and I don't know where they're getting it from, about the capacity, about the buyback clause, about what we could possibly do with the land has come on, because I really do not know. I would also say that some of the emails have verged on bullying and I do resent being told that I must vote this way because otherwise I will not vote for you. Well, I will vote what I think is in the best interest of the City of Clarence. That might not agree with what you feel, might not agree with what the people who send the emails feel. But I can only do what I feel is best for the City of Clarence. On that note, I'm going to support this extension. And my reasons are essentially firstly, because I firmly believe that the eastern shore needs good hotel development. As was pointed out, we have all these amazing facilities. You need somewhere to stay to enjoy them. It's no good having them all. Nobody can get here or they just stay in hotels in the Hobart CPV and they're going to walk around that for sure. Let's be realistic. People want to stay on this side of the river. They want to, if they're going to Bunsen Arena, they want to stay close by. We don't have capacity at the moment for them to do that. And I believe that having an iconic hotel like this will actually raise the profile and businesses of the whole area. It's not just a business on itself. It will bring people to the area and it will lift all the other restaurants and cafes and small businesses that are in the area. I don't believe, as some of the emails have suggested, that putting a car park on the land is the most appropriate option for this rather iconic piece of waterfront. Yes, ferry terminal is important. It's in the plan already. It doesn't need to be used as a car park for that. My second reason, and I guess again to echo some of the things that people have said, is that chambrord have done everything they can over the term of this contract to make this work. They initially signed, probably led into it perhaps by the state government at the time with TasTAFE, who then, for a whole heap of reasons, which had really very little to do with this development, pulled out. Because they have a preference and because education is really important to chambrord, which you take the time to look at the information on the company, you would see, they then started talking to UTAS. And UTAS at that point was very firmly convinced that a master's level course, at a level of which there are probably five institutions in the world to rival it, was a really important thing to do in Tasmania where hospitality and tourism are so fundamental to our economy. Nobody saw COVID coming. Of course we didn't. And I think if you look at the documentation, if you look at the fact that chambrord had contracts ready to go for the tenders, you understand that everything was ready to go. COVID got in the way, as it's got in the way of very many things for very many people. And like Alderman Walker, I actually commend chambrord for not going ahead and just starting a bit of work. Because obviously they could have done. They've invested ten million dollars in this site over the years since we started. Another half a million dollars would probably have got them substantial commencement and we wouldn't be in this discussion at all. But for them, they wanted to do the honourable thing. They didn't think it was right to just put a few pipes in the ground and walk away for a couple of years and leave that site where nobody could do anything with it. I think they've really tried to be the most honourable people that they can in this. Now, the future is uncertain, of course it is. There are no guarantees that UTAS will be able to get the student numbers it wants in the short term for this course. They have, however, committed to working with chambrord to assist in finding another education provider. There are a number around that could do that. We have been relatively immune to COVID here in Tasmania. Certainly for most of us on our day-to-day living, we weren't as impacted as many people were. And in fact, in Australia, we haven't been as impacted as much in the world.
Thank you, Alderman Chong. Any other speakers? Alderman Bonbetta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, what we are looking at tonight is the sale and development agreement and the clauses within that. That development, that sale and development agreement was signed on the twenty-fifth of May, two thousand and seventeen. And that agreement is a contract. As a young legal student, I learnt about the technicalities of contracts. And it's important to note that a contract is a legally binding document that recognises and governs the rights and duties of the parties to the agreement. A contract is legally enforceable because it meets the requirements and approval of the law. In this case, that is the only thing that we are to look at tonight. The contract and what it entails. I, like many of the Aldermen around the table, have actually had a number of emails, probably around sixty emails in relation to this. I have had one email that supports the officer's recommendation and the office have not. What I've made clear in my response to those people who've emailed me is that this is not a planning matter. It is a contractual matter. There is a valid planning permit, which depending on its interpretation actually is to run for another one and a half years or on the other interpretation, it has been met in terms of substantial commencement. As Alderman James said, the substantial commencement as far as the planning scheme is concerned as compared to the contract are two different things. It's a higher bar as far as the contract is concerned. On the seventh of September, the proponents chambrord presented to us and provided us with a document which is an attachment to the council agenda item. I feel it's incredibly important to bring the Aldermen's attention to page ten of that document where it says chambrord remains totally committed to the Kangaroo Bay development. Chambrord has no intent to exit the project. It is not seeking a buyback arrangement as it has already spent five years and more than ten million dollars on this project. At the Friday briefing, I asked the general manager to tell us what he thought would happen if the council tonight decided to buy back. And he set out a process that he thought may occur. He thought that the proponent would be likely to seek an injunction from the Supreme Court. And that would give it time then, time and space to contest council's decision for breach of contract. So I go back to what we are here tonight to look at. The contractual arrangement, the sale and development agreement, which chambrord does not want to actually go back on. As has been said by the mayor, by Alderman Ewington and some others, if...
Thank you, Alderman Bonbetta. Alderman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like a number of others around the table, I wasn't here in two thousand and seventeen when this decision was made. If I was, I doubt if I would have supported it then. When we were asked to support an extension last year, I was reluctant to do so. And this request was made well before we'd even heard of COVID nineteen. Yes, what we have in front of us is a legal contract with options. But I was elected to listen to the people of this city. Apart from the two and a half thousand people that have signed the petition, the actual hundreds of emails that I've received from even further afield than our city and I was stopped by two people from Sandy Bay today on this topic. They've been written by very concerned people and most of them are actually very well informed on the history of this development. And I, like other Aldermen, councillors, thank them for their correspondence over taking the time to express their heartfelt feelings. Now, if we're not here to listen to our ratepayers, I don't know what we're here for. I really don't. I can't support a further extension. I'm not actually convinced the developers will ever do anything here. As for an elite hospitality school, that was never going to happen. They've talked about a local provider, a local hospitality provider. It's not going to happen. And we talk about the world having changed. Well, yes, it has. In nineteen ninety-nine, Tasmania wasn't even on the map as a tourism destination. We do have a chance now to do something extremely significant. No one, especially me, wants this land locked up for years. And this is a distinct possibility if we keep on granting extensions. I'm all for doing something on this magnificent piece of world-class waterfront. Who wouldn't want to own it? The people of our city do. As a farmer's daughter, Dad always said, don't sell the farm. Rarely did get the chance to get it back. We have that opportunity. Let's put the interests of the community and the future generations that we represent first. Because once it's gone, it's gone. I encourage my colleagues to listen to our ratepayers. And like the deputy mayor mentioned earlier, I also have to be true to myself. So I cannot support the extension.
Thank you. Roger Clive, Alderman Ewker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I thank my colleagues for their input tonight. I think the arguments in relation to the contract and the situation we're facing there and the risks that we're actually placing the whole community in have been quite clearly spelled out. I do want to challenge the majority's support to not go ahead with this project. You know, I mean, I think that is just, you know, I mean, we all know that in these sort of situations, the people are against stuff, make the most noise. I don't think anyone's going to doubt that. You know, I've never heard anyone come to me and say, don't do it. All I overhear is people saying, get on with it. Make it happen and make it happen as soon as possible. And as the mayor suggested, I think the single best chance for us to actually make this happen is to actually allow the extension with some pretty stringent conditions that we've added into the motion tonight, which give us a lot more control over and puts some more conditions on chambrord to actually match all they make, you know, fulfil their obligations. We'll know well within two years if they're going to get there or not. And we've got some options that we can sit it down the track. But to sit here tonight and say no to this extension, not only places it at risk of costing the community a hell of a lot of money, but it sends a terrible message to the business community, to potential investors into our city. And when are we going to actually become a city? Are we just going to continue to be a suburb of Hobart for the rest of our lives? When are we going to grow up? You know, I mean, every city needs to consider how it evolves and how it matures. And to put a hotel into Kangaroo Bay, if we're not going to put one there, where are we going to put one? Lindispar? Lorddahl? You know, where are we going to do it? I just can't understand if we can't actually be mature enough to accept that sometimes we've got to make decisions where the noisy minority who keep bullying us, as Alderman Chong quite rightly pointed out there, badger us into the point and have been continual since this whole project was even considered. We've got to stand up for the people out there that rely on the business activity that this sort of project will create. The small businesses that rely on the people being in our city, spending money, you know, getting out and about, the kids that need jobs. And it's all right for the people that want to object to this sort of stuff that, you know, might be, you know, retired or or don't need that economic activity. I need it in my business. If I don't have other businesses out there being active, I don't survive. And I think as a community and the message that we send to the rest of Hobart, Australia and the rest of the world, we need to grow up. And I think that it's one thing that we just need to be able to stand up and say, this is in the best interest of the majority of our community. I mean, we look at, you know, as being someone who likes going out to nice restaurants and going to a bar and having the occasional beer, we don't have that on the eastern shore. You know, we do not have decent bars and restaurants. I'm going to go to Moona River now. They've got some great restaurants out there, you know, you go to Sandy Bay, North Hobart.
Sounds a bit like what? Well, it wasn't like Sandy Bay did actually come up.
You need the opportunity to do that. You know, we have an obligation to create a city that's vibrant and actually creates the economic activities, support the businesses and to create those sort of places where people in our city can go to.
Thank you, Alderman Ewker.
I encourage you all to support this motion.
So the motion before the chair is we grant chambrord a two-year extension. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five. So six, all those against. That's six, six all. The motion is lost. I do note that we have another six months to come to a decision on this. So moving on to...
Mayor, I did foreshadow not doing the motion tonight.
Well, I wasn't aware, I ought to defer.
Yep. The council refers the matter.
Well, it's automatically deferred. It doesn't need a motion. That's where we are.
We defer it to a workshop, to a future workshop.
It will come back to a future workshop. You don't need a motion to... It will come back.
Mr. Mayor, I take your point, but I also know that this was discussed...
Mr. Mayor, I, 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 I take your point, but I also know that this was discussed on Friday and that on Friday you said that you would circulate a motion. And that is the motion that I was referring to when I foreshadowed one. Now, I, I take it that there is no need. And I take it that, um, Shambro has got the message, as, as was articulated, that they, that, that we are not going to be rushing into a buyback and that, um, they have an opportunity to challenge this decision in, in the court as a contract matter.
Thank you, Alderman Mora. Um, moving on to Alderman's question time, uh, there are no matters on notice or questions, Santas on it. Questions, answers to questions on notice. Um, there is, uh, there are answers to questions without notice at the previous council meeting, which we'll take as read. Um, questions without notice. Can I start you, Alderman Mora?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And my question relates to Kangaroo Bay.
Is what?
Boulevard. Mr. Mayor, my question relates to the, um, sale of council land to the proponent. And I just seek some sure, some, um, information as to the value of that land in terms of the contractual arrangements. And, um, whether or not that value is as individual plots of land or whether that value is as the collective of all land that we're going to do. Because that value, of course, um, will be, uh, you know, it, it's likely to be that the sum of the parts is greater, the sum of, the, the whole is greater than the sum of the parts.
Uh, General Manager, are you open to assisting that, Rick?
Um, thank you, uh, Alderman Mora. Thank you, Mayor. Um, in terms of the valuation for the land that's commercially confidential, I can't disclose that publicly. Um, have you disclosed that, um, on a confidential basis privately, our Vira Member? And I'll undertake to do that tomorrow. Uh, I'll need to, uh, take it on notice in terms of how that valuation is made out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I look forward to that. Unfortunately, um, we won't be able to tell the people of Clarence what it's worth. My next question actually relates to a concerned tenant in the area, one of the occupiers of council property, who has been told that, um, her lease will expire in twenty twenty-one. I note that there has been a long delay in actually submitting that application to council and we haven't formally received it yet, although we've got a couple of briefings and we've got a couple of alternatives. And I'm just wondering whether it is beholden upon us as landlords to at least keep our tenants informed of what is happening with Kangaroo Boulevard and the likely timelines.
Are you in a position to say?
Um, I'll need to take that on notice, Alderman Mora. I'm absolutely unaware of who you're referring to.
Alderman Kendy?
Uh, just one quick one from me, perhaps some to Mr. Lovell. Um, could you advise, uh, me at some stage for, uh, at some stage as to how many more villas we can expect to be built at One Hill Estate at Seven Mile Beach under the current sort of approvals? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I, I need to take it on notice, but I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ewaka?
La Mornia.
Sorry, Alderman, is any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Wa. Um, obviously recently the council, um, approved a roads priority list, which was sent to the, uh, infrastructure minister. My question or request is that we probably also, probably at the time should have thought to have sent it to federal infrastructure minister and indeed, uh, almost anyone else whose election is irrelevant to our part of the world. And if so, can I request that the car is sent to Canberra, uh, both sides of the house and also circulated to members of Franklin?
So this is a list of priorities that we've asked. I believe we have done that.
I thank you for the question. I'll need to check hers. It's circulated. It's certainly gone to Minister Ferguson. Um, but in terms of federal members, I, I think it's gone to a number, but I'd like to confirm that.
Yeah, so the, I guess my question is, is it includes the federal infrastructure?
I do recall writing to them all, but I'm not sure whether that was a particular letter or not. Oh, hang on, I'll notice that. Uh, Alderman Walker?
Thank you. And I'll preface this by quickly saying, I think that our staff did a remarkable job as we hand through the COVID budgeting period and then working through what rates would be and getting them out. That said, uh, on Friday, our household received the quarterly rate notice. It was issued date the eighth of October, so through speedy mail, we received it on the ninth of October. The payment, so I assume that many people might only be getting it, say, today. The due date is the nineteenth of October. This seems tighter than usual and doesn't meet, um, a regular household's fortnightly payment cycles. Um, am I misunderstanding these, this as to be a shorter timeline? And, uh, if I'm not, uh, is this a really hard and fast arbitrary date? Do they actually have a few more days given on where they are with their pay cycle?
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Any other assistance there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for the question, um, with regards to the rates reminder notices. Um, in July, the rates notices are issued and on the rates notice are the four installment dates. Um, they're not quarterly. Um, there are statutory requirements as to the number of days for the first installment to be due and the second installment to be due. Um, and then the spacing for the final two installments is considered in terms of what is, um, likely to be occurring in the community such as Christmas, school holidays, Easter, those sorts of considerations. So it's not a neat, um, quarterly, um, timeframe, um, given the legislative requirements, um, in terms of setting those dates. With regards to the reminder notices, um, we're not actually required by law to provide that notification. Um, I do accept and understand that the timing of the receipt of those is perhaps a little bit of a surprise and short in terms of, uh, the nineteenth of October due date. However, we had some operational matters that, um, halted us from actually having those out earlier. So we accept that this might be a surprise.
And, and the opportunity to be lenient in regard to that?
Um, we can certainly consider requests should they come through formally in writing.
Right. It is an, it is an seemingly tight timing this reminder. As I say, it's not a usual thing and I commend how we're going, but I think this is one that's going to catch us all short. And if we're happy going through that process, we'll probably be spending more and then the full cost of a couple of days. Um, my second question, uh, is the man through you. Uh, and I'm very happy for possibly any double day or for anybody to take this one on notice. But, uh, what are the, if you like, professional development or refresher courses that our staff are required to undertake every year? I'd like to know the different variety and, and, and the usual amount of time that has to be allocated for this. So first aid, diversity training, uh, other matters, if I can get some understanding of that, that would be useful.
Perhaps we could have a, uh, some sort of a snapshot?
Yes, certainly. I'll take that on notice and, uh, we'll provide that advice.
Thanks. Alderman Longley, have you had a couple of questions, Alderman?
Uh, Alderman Longley has submitted a couple of questions. Um, the first question from Alderman Longley is, has a date been set for the appeal hearing for the Rodney Hill development? The answer to that question, uh, is that the tenth, eleventh and fourteenth of December have been set down for the hearing.
On before Christmas.
Uh, question two is, question two is, is council in a position to provide an update as to where the announced Dewant River Ferry, sorry, Dewant River Passenger Ferry Service trial is at? When will it start? I've been in contact with the Department of State Growth today, who have advised that there are a number of parties, uh, who have already pre-registered interest in the project. And, uh, there is a request for proposal, um, documentation being drafted at the moment. And it's expected to be imminently, uh, released, uh, aiming for the end of the month.
Thank you, Alderman Pierce.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And I'm not sure if this leads to what Alderman here was trying to do. I'm not quite sure. But, uh, I just wonder, we know why people have surrounded development. I'm probably bored talking about the house development. Uh, I wonder should we put just a little bit more information without giving our staff that planning staff too much extra work? But for instance, sometimes a house, maybe the precise is seven, seven metres and people complain about the height. But if they knew that in that area they could build to eight point five metres, I just wonder would have cut, uh, down some of the limitations where you have. And I'm just saying, give people that a little bit more information without giving their planning staff. It's work. I wonder if this could be done, just discuss with a workshop or something like that.
Uh, thank you for the question, Alderman Pierce. Through you, Mayor. Um, we, uh, had in mind to bring, uh, a question of resourcing to a workshop, uh, and potentially at the next workshop. Uh, there is no possibility of, um, providing additional, uh, services without additional resources. And at this point in time, our planning area, as with a number of other areas, are significantly under-resourced given the level of activity that we've got. So our plan is certainly to talk with Alderman, uh, at the next workshop, uh, with a view to trying to address those resourcing issues within the constraints that we've got at the moment.
Alderman James?
Oh, yes, thanks, George. Uh, two questions through you to, um, Mr. Nelson. Uh, Mr. Nelson, uh, I have been provided with, I don't think any of the other Alderman councillors have been provided with a copy of the sale and development agreement that was part of the discussions or in part this evening. Um, firstly, on page four, four, two, it says in that, on that, in relation to the contract, attachment five sets out the terms of the buyback contract and, uh, relatively, uh, relatively. This includes the buyback price of two point four four. Is that, uh, uh, attachment five available to the public? Or is that one of the confidential documents that I would have to put in writing in order to have the detail and what it implies in relation to the buyback contract?
Um, thank you, Alderman James. Through you, Mayor. Um, the entire contract is commercial in confidence and therefore confidential. That includes attachment five. As, as I advised previously, under section twenty-eight of the Local Government Act, you can make application to me to view the contract. Uh, and, uh, as I also advised, uh, that would need to be on provision of an undertaking that it remain confidential. Uh, it's not available for public distribution.
It's just that in the officer's papers, Mr. Mayor, it does refer to attachment five and what, that, what the, um, terms of the buyback are. So it has already hit in the sense, the public at large. And so, um, I'm just wondering as to whether or not...
Well, I think the general manager's advice is clear there. Um, there has, I, I think it's, uh, to the general manager's credit that he's been able to take an issue which would normally be dealt in close to council in the public arena, uh, taking into account sensitivities. So, um, the fact that we know about that cause doesn't mean that it's available to everyone to scrutinise. It is commercial in confidence.
And my second question is through you to the CFO. And that is that the fourteen point five million monies that were part of the, um, grant, as part of Covid nineteen, I, I believe, um, what criteria, criterion, criteria is, uh, able to be accessed insofar as, is it possible for all the monies for the sound attenuation wall of the South Arm to be sourced from that source? Or are we basically locked into a particular project that would require certain conditions in order for us to access those funds? Thank you.
Uh, General Manager?
Sorry, I don't know if it's, uh, if it's appropriate or...
Oh, yes. I'll have to take that, that question. Um, can we take that on notice? So we'll need to make a look at the, uh, terms of the line, but in broad terms, any decision regarding any financing will require a decision of council. Thank you very much.
Alderman Mora?
Thank you. Um, I've already asked the general manager about getting viewing stats for our meetings, our public meetings. And I'd be particularly interested to add to that, uh, stats for tonight, um, just for our information as to how well we're engaging with our community in this wonderful democracy of ours.
I'm sure it wasn't an average turnout tonight.
No, that's why we see before and after as well.
Sure. Thank you. I'll send everyone a link to the, uh, YouTube site.
Thank you. Well, that brings us to the close of the, uh, of the council meeting that's, uh, open. There are a couple of confidential matters that we do have to deal with. So, um, can I say, uh, goodnight to the members of parliament that are still with us? And, uh, ask that the, uh, the live streaming...